This is the September 7 meeting of the Reston Board of Directors. And with us are Director May Par, Director Greerich, Director Flashman, Director Patreen, Treasurer Patreen, and Vice President Josh Sack. Joining us remotely is Director Collins, but he's going to be on listen-only mode while he's driving. Director Johnson indicated he would be arriving late. He's got -- and there's Director Dodd.
My apologies.
No, you're fine.
Is this me?
No, I think you're up here.
Thank you.
You're -- as I said to Director Josh Sack, lawyers know that you're not late until the judge is on the bench.
Oh, good.
So just calling us to order.
Thank you.
And Director Johnson said he would be arriving late. He's at the back-to-school night at Langston Hughes. So he's got his priorities squared away appropriately. Opening remarks, I wanted to share with the board and any of the membership that's listening. We have made substantial progress with Supervisor Alcorn on the changes to the Reston Master Plan. All of the changes we've requested have been made, except for two. And that's a lot, because we gave them a lot of changes to make, and they've incorporated all but two. The two that are still outstanding relate to the continued reference -- it's down to three now of Park Authority properties that are outside the Reston Master Plan boundary, and that's a problem, as we all know. And the other one is a reference to the Park Authority -- it could be read to say that Park Authority has the ability to tell us what we can and cannot do. He disagrees with that interpretation, and says so in writing, which is good. So that's fine with that. So we've made a lot of progress. It comes up in front of the board supervisors for action on Tuesday, and I think there'll be several follow-on motions, one of which is addressed to an equitable arrangement for funding Reston Association facilities, which would be a conference between ourselves, the Park Authority, and Reston Community Center. I don't know what can come of it, but that he appreciates the problem that has been accumulating over the last several years, where 3,000 multifamily units have been approved without conditioning the approval of those properties being subjected to our assessment. Every year, we lose $2.3 million because of the failure to enforce the Conference of Plan and require those units to join RA. And that makes it hard for all of us. It increases the assessment for every member household of RA by an excess of $100. So hopefully, that problem can be remedied soon. With that, can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Director Patreen, seconded by Director Flashman. Any debate, any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous, and Mr. Collins is not participating yet. We look forward to his participation. Member comments. I know that we have at least two members present to comment, and we have written comments from past President Bitzer. Can we just put them into the minutes? Because I guess she's not going to be here, and her comments are rather extensive. So if I can ask unanimous consent for that, seeing and hearing no objections, so ordered. Which of the two of you wants to go first? Former Director John Mooney, if we can have your address, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President and other board members. I'm John Mooney, and I live at 1400 Churchill Place. I have several comments on tonight's agenda based on my failures on the board and my service on the Board Governance Committee all those years. Because of my time limit, I will only kind of hit headlines. First, I'm afraid that the proposed due board meetings per month would seriously strain board members, make it harder for them to be prepared for meetings, and discourage candidates for the board. Secondly, I support the changes proposed for Operations Resolution 5 concerning the relationship of the board to the General Counsel, together with the amendment to the bylaws to support that change. Third, I'm happy to read that the board will consider further changes to Resolution 5. Both Vice President Justchak and General Counsel Champ have my detailed recommendations on that resolution. I continue to believe that clarification is needed on the relationship of the board to the CEO, the board to the CFO, and board to staff, issues that have caused many problems in the past. Fourth, I urge the board to carefully -- be careful in their decisions about the board Operating Committee, the BAC, and the Board Governance Committee, the BGC. I don't think BAC can or should be replaced by anything like an executive committee. I think that would create a strain between that committee and the rest of the board, who might be felt left out, who might feel left out. To avoid board disagreements about the BAC in recent years, I believe the relationship between the president and BAC, and between BAC and the board need clarification. Those have flared up many, many times in the later years of my service. Fifth, while I agree with that some superfluous functions of the BGC should be eliminated, the BGC itself should not be eliminated. It provides a careful deliberative process for changing RA governing documents, for which the board as a whole does not have the time or frankly, the taste. One former board member has called the BGC "the board's think tank." That may be a bit grand, but you get the idea. Also, the BGC has greatly improved and managed the CEO evaluation process in recent years. Sixth, though I myself had strongly recommended a land use committee when I first came onto the board, I have come to believe that the Land Use Coordinating Group, which some of you will remember, it was created by CEO Folkerson in 2017, is a much better option, bringing together RA leadership and key community groups like Reston Citizens Association, Coalition for Plan Reston, which together led the successful fight against the county's proposed PRC amendment. So those are my statements, and I'd be happy to assist the board if they choose on any of those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mooney. Former President Anton.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Karen Anton, 11714 Dry River Court. First, I want to share my views on the proposals before the board tonight with regard to the Lake Equity Working Group. While I agree wholeheartedly with the intended focus of the group, I believe this falls well within the purview of PRAC and RA's Communications Department, and does not require the formation of a working group that will place extra burden on staff. Why not ask the board and staff liaisons to work with PRAC leadership to come up with ways to address the concerns and bring recommendations back to the board? Much simpler, and I believe it will accomplish the same thing. Second, and this pertains to looking at the BAC and BGC and possible alternatives. I believe it's been nearly a decade since RA's first board assessment. That's too long. Firms specializing, I'm sure you know, firms specializing in nonprofit governance serve as a vital tool to identify areas for improvement and ensure that the board is functioning optimally. They provide valuable assistance in streamlining board committees, structures, and conducting comprehensive surveys to assess both the overall strengths and weaknesses of the board and performance of individual board directors. Whether or not BAC and BGC continue, I hope that the board will see the importance of these assessments and schedule them as they deem necessary. Now might be a good time. Thank you, and have a great meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Anton. Appreciate you coming out. Brittany, anyone else seeking to -- any other members seeking to have comment?
No, we don't have any additional -- let's never find out.
Thank you. Mr. CEO, do we have any matters for executive session?
No, not tonight.
We can move on. I had asked that the revisions to Board Association Operations Resolution 5 and the bylaws come --
Chat message next.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know if there was anyone online, but I saw a chat message. But it looks like it's Brittany's reminder, so we're good.
So we had a proposed draft of the Amendment to Resolution 5 circulated by our CEO, and I think that was a product of a meeting that I and Vice President Josh Sack and General Counsel --
Champ. Champ.
Champ, sorry. And the CEO had. And I think that's ready for adoption, along with the amendment to the bylaws. If I can have a motion on that?
I believe the one in our board packet is different.
Right.
So which one are we looking at?
We're looking at the one proposed by the CEO.
So I think we need to enter that into the record, the one that you emailed the board, so that the public knows about it. And then...
So maybe the motion would be phrased as move to approve the proposed revisions to Board and Association Operations Resolution 5 as proposed by the CEO, and to adopt the Amendment to the Bylaws Section 4.7 as presented by the board, BGC. And if someone can then make that motion.
So moved.
So moved by Director Josh Sack? Do I have a second? Seconded by Director May Par. Any discussion?
Can we bring it up on the screen so that people can see it, since they haven't seen it?
If Brittany can do that, that would be great. Yeah, this is not...
That's the board packet one.
That's the packet version.
The board package is a different one from this proposed by the CEO that was circulated to the board earlier this week. Well, the microphone was off. While we're trying to pull it up, were there any discussion regarding this combined motion? I need six votes for it to pass. Director Patreen?
I'm going to vote against this motion, as well as the previous motion and all the other motions related to Resolution 5, because as I followed this for many years, even before I got on the board, the issue has, as I've always understood it, had to be with communication between board and staff, and what staff could do in response to board requests. As this has evolved, we appreciate so. I don't think this is necessary nor good corporate practice that the General Counsel be, other than having reporting lines to the board of directors, I think the current mode of operating hire, fire, and so on is more than adequate to address what had been issues that had passed, which generated the requirement for the change to begin with. I don't see that the changes as proposed will really protect the organization from problems that took place in the past, if they were to surface again. And I just don't see the change necessary. Thank you.
Any other comments? Are we ready for a vote?
Mac, I know you had sent an email regarding the new resolution and your edits there. Was there anything else that you wanted to discuss here in this setting?
Well, I think just to sort of characterize correctly, these wouldn't reflect my edits. I would say this reflects a dialogue between myself, the president, the vice president, and Tony scried it together. I think, I continue to think about the totality of Resolution 5, you know, and what's the issue we're trying to solve, and how best to run the organization. So my primary concern when this first came up, and it was quite a surprise to me when it first came up a year ago, when I first started, because I just didn't know it was out there, relates to my ability to run the organization, and 80 to 85% of the work the General Counsel does is work with staff to implement things the board's already decided, you know, at the policy level. I also understand that there could be a concern, and maybe this concern was something in the past, I want to look forward, you know, not backwards, but what if the CEO put pressure on a General Counsel? And that scenario could exist potentially with any department head. Appreciate the sensitive nature of General Counsel, not to compare them to every single department head. The primary issues that we talked about, that Tony scried up, that I was very concerned about, related to my ability to discipline and to conduct the review, because most of the work setting and the day-to-day work is really a function of getting things done and moved through. I think the issues around termination, I mean, still, you know, it can be difficult to manage employees, you know, if you can't get to that point of discipline. So my commitment to the board is, if you decide not to make changes to Resolution 5 and leave it as is, it would still be the same. It would be if you have a concern that you're not getting true legal advice, I don't think that exists. I genuinely don't. And if there is a concern, I'd like to know, you know, what that is. If there's a concern about not having access to Tony, I think when Tony gets on the phone, he'll tell you. He talks to a lot of you, a lot, you know, about things, some of which are not legal in nature, you know, at all. So in my email, what I tried to communicate was, the vast majority of the things that I was really concerned about, particularly about the ability to guide the day-to-day work, would still remain solely, you know, in my hands. However, the trust issue is somewhat of a two-way situation, so to the extent that I don't have the ability to do things that I used to have the ability to do, now this creates a downstream problem. And I think these are not issues that will happen with either the current General Counsel or myself, but if the idea is to solve for a future problem, may, you know, solve one issue and create a different one. That's the way I would assess where we're at. So, but I think generally, if you look at like the first four or five sentences, that was the lion's share of things that I had been raising in previous communication.
Vice President Josh Sack.
So I'm a little disappointed, Mac, because I felt like when we met, we did all come to the agreement that these were good changes to make, with the exception of one, which you were going to think about, and you did get back...
Can you speak up a bit?
Yeah. When we met, I felt like those changes were agreed upon, with the exception of one, which was the termination, and you were going to think about that and let us know later, which you did email us, and it's in your last paragraph. So I feel like what you just said is that you don't agree to the changes that we made, but I really felt like the four of us came in that small group to consensus on these changes. My concern has always been related to the reporting relationship, is that the board needs the ability to have legal counsel, especially when it comes to issues with the CEO. This is a great time to edit the said resolution, because we have no issues with our CEO. And I'd much rather fix a resolution and give us the access that we need in a time in which we don't need it, so if a future board needs it, it's there. I think the way the resolution is written is that it does give the board access to the General Counsel without the CEO involvement, and that is a very real thing that a board needs to do. And without making these changes, it is not clear that the board has access to legal counsel without the CEO. But we may find ourselves in a situation in which we need that access. And it has been an issue in the past. It was part of the Stone Turn Report when it was presented. It has been kicked around, and regardless whether we pass this or not, I do think that we owe it this evening not to kick it down the road anymore. It has been discussed for years. It has been edited with our new CEO, within BGC, within the past, you know, several months. And so I think that we need to end this evening.
Director Farrell.
What, for those that are more intimately familiar with this, what precautions are in there to prevent the pendulum swing, so that we do not have a rogue president take -- and this is not a shot at you, President Farrell, at all. Again, we're speaking out of time, where we feel confident that we could put something in like this, because I think we do have a really strong core, both on the board and at the C-suite level. But what precautions are in the revised resolution that would prevent against a swing in power to the president that we would not be able to fully control, I guess?
Well, it's simple.
Yep.
Because it says only the board's CEO and the board president may give work assignments to General Counsel on legal analysis and opinions. So if it came to a point where the board, where a board president was exceeding the authority that rests in the board, because after all, y'all vote for the board president, I would expect either General Counsel or the CEO to come to the board and say, "I need help. I'm being overwhelmed." I don't think that will happen. I'm giving you the gavel, because I want to speak to this. Vice President Josh Sack. We need to pass this. There is a concern that I've had with ethical obligations of Mr. Champ that were incorporated into his hiring agreement. A General Counsel has a duty of loyalty to the association, and that duty of loyalty can only be enforced by the governing body. This change enables our CEO to do all the things he wants to do on a day-to-day basis. But at the end of the day, if we perceive that the General Counsel is not acting in the best interest of the association as the board determines, the board can terminate him, and the CEO gets a vote in that. So we're not undermining the CEO. Obviously, we have an opportunity to speak to that, but it's not just General Counsel, it's also special counsel. That's the bylaw change. As a practicing attorney, I am very concerned that we don't put our General Counsel in the position of having divided loyalties. By doing this, it is clear that General Counsel's loyalty is to the association and the governing body of that, of the association, which is this board. We have had a problem in the past where General Counsel did not perceive that issue. Let me give you one specific example that I could be dealing with in the next couple of months. Assume that someone has a whistleblower complaint against our CEO. That complaint comes to the president, okay? If our General Counsel reports to the CEO, the threat of retaliation is immense to the whistleblower. And so under those circumstances, the president would be left with no choice but to have to go out to outside counsel at expense. But if the board is responsible for the hiring and firing of the General Counsel, under those circumstances, the president could go to the General Counsel for advice on how to handle a whistleblower complaint. That's one example. It's the most stark example, but it's an example. And so I'm asking all of you to vote in favor of adopting the resolution as drafted by our CEO, so we can move on with life and have the confidence that our General Counsel -- and this is consistent with our General Counsel's work description when he was hired, because we were trying to, in the job description that he was hired under, we were saying things to this effect, to make it clear that the board, that the first duty of loyalty is to the association.
Go ahead, Arwin.
I think Trevor's question was something about a swing of authority or power to the president that would exceed what might be appropriate. And there is a simple answer to that, I think. And the simple answer is that by a majority vote, the president can be replaced.
Exactly.
He doesn't, he would still be a member of the board. It's simply his position as president would change.
And I would expect General Counsel or the CEO would come to the board if that were to happen.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll take it out, or if you want the gavel back?
No.
Okay.
Call the vote.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, which I think we're all clear on, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six, and I don't think that we have Mike participating yet. So all those opposed, say aye. One, two, three, four, five, six. So that motion carries, seven to one.
I see that Director Johnson's face is on the board, and is he pressing?
He's not able to participate, because he's driving. He's listening.
Oh, I see.
He said that at the beginning of the meeting.
That's Johnson, not...
No, 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 they're calling.
So it's six.
It's Johnson on the picture. I'm referring to the picture of the...
Oh, it's Cam. That's not Travis. That's Cam.
Oh, that's Cam, okay.
Can someone find Mr. Flashman, my glass?
So the vote is six in favor, one opposed, one abstention. Motion carries. I will pass the gavel back.
Thank you, Mr. President Josh Sack. All right. The next order of business is a conversation about the Board Operations Committee and the Board Governance Committee. So we have some questions that were put together by Vice President Josh Sack. And do you want to walk us through these and have a conversation?
Sure.
And just so it's clear to everybody, I don't expect this to take action tonight. I expect this to be the first of several conversations about how we do our business going forward. So I'm not going to ask for a vote this evening. Hopefully, we can take a vote in October, November. Please.
So there's been some discussion about whether our current governance structure with BAC and BGC is still relevant to this time and age. As we heard tonight from our members, it has been in place for a little while, and so the discussion is really to get a gauge from the board as to how you feel about the operations of these committees. When I wrote out the document, I put some general questions that you guys might want to consider as you're thinking about it at the top. You know, this document's been circulated for a couple of meetings now, because we've pushed this topic down the road a few times. And then what I did, and for anyone listening at home, it's on page 23 of the packet, the document I'm referring to, and then I went through each of the current responsibilities of both BAC and the Board Governance Committee, and I tried to come up with some suggestions on where those responsibilities might go. If I only came up with one, then I guess you consider that more of a recommendation than an option. But I think that we have seen, or at least me, from even this governing year, the ability to, you know, have BGC and BAC as fully functioning has been an issue. We haven't had a BGC meeting that has quorum since we started this board here. There have been difficulties in the past that I have seen before I even got on the board, but also since I've been on the board, with what I'll call some politicking of keeping things in committee and not keeping things at the board level. I've seen a lot of interest in my time on the board for all board members to want to participate in all discussions. And BGC and BAC and that governance structure make board members feel like they're out of that, if they're not assigned to BGC or they're not assigned to BAC, that they're missing out on the ability to make those decisions. And so that's why I suggested that we take a look at the governance structure and see if it's still working. I also have recognized that there's a lot of staff time that goes into preparing the board materials and the committee materials for all of our meetings. And then what happens is it's done multiple times. It might be done at BGC, and then that gets pushed to BAC, and then that gets pushed to the board, so it's three different times in which staff are preparing materials. So it's three different times in which staff are preparing materials for all the board decisions. And it also makes us less operationally efficient. If the staff want to bring something to us, it, they typically will have to go through a committee, then try to get it out of committee, go to BAC to get it on a board agenda, and then come ultimately to the board, and then the board has its own opinion, might send it back. And so I feel like we might need to be more operationally efficient in this day and age than than taking several months. There's also been arguments over the years as to what belongs in what committee. John Mooney even said tonight that, you know, BGC used to be used as a think tank. It also used to be used as a place where all resolutions were created in in recent past. I've been told that resolutions aren't part of BGC's purview. And and if you go back to the resolution, it does, it actually says that BAC is the one that reviews resolutions and not BGC. And so I think there's been some debate as to what things go to each of these committees and who has the authority and was the process to get something ultimately to the board for us to vote on. So I would pass it off to you guys to maybe, you know, share some experiences that you might have had, you know, pro or or against the the current structure, and then maybe we can take some some notes, or you are free to comment on any of the suggestions that I've provided if you don't like them. I wouldn't say, and I know it was in the materials, that maybe we have multiple board meetings a month. That is certainly a potential suggestion. I don't think we we have to move to multiple board meetings a month. What I do recognize is that eight of the nine board members need to serve on BAC and BGC as a combination. And so eight of the nine of us are doing two board meetings a month anyway, plus whatever committee assignment we have. So I didn't think that adding a second board meeting would be any different than nine of us are at the table all at one night instead of things being passed from committee to committee to ultimately making it to us at a future meeting. So, but I think that we could also do some things like establishing the agendas ourselves so that we're not fighting amongst each other about what the future agendas should be, or giving that direction to staff as a group versus as a small, a small committee might help us. So just wanted to open up to the floor and see if anyone had any other comments or insights that, from your own experience.
Director Maupin?
I thought I'd go first because I'm the newest board member, and I've been here for just a couple of months, maybe three months. Looking at things from outside and then experiencing them inside as as a member, first of all, I believe that we need to be efficient, number one. We need to get board members and the members involved. If we keep doing these duplicative committees and boards that require significant time on both board members and become a roadblock for members to even come and talk to us, I believe this activity, this this paper here, attempts to at least do something about that, and I'm 100% in favor of that because I think there are efficiencies to be gained. I agree with you, Jennifer. I think it's, it's not efficient to spend time in multiple meetings with very huge intersected topics with BGC and BAC. So my experience from outside, every time I've looked at board meetings, they just run long and long and long. That's from a member's perspective. While I'm here, I appreciate the work that's involved, but I also think that we need to be mindful of getting to our objectives in a timely manner because the more we spend time just arguing and discussing and going over the same thing over and over again, we're going to end up with, John, Mr. President, with this, something like a resolution five. It's just going to keep coming up and coming up and coming up. So I strongly favor doing something about this, and I'm very supportive of that. Thank you.
Any other board member want to speak to the question? Director Fleischer?
In it, as a general observation, I see that this is proposing a rather significant shift of consideration of a number of items from committees to the board itself. And we will necessitate, as you point out, possibility of multiple meetings of the board in a month. And that may be a recurrent, not exceptional, experience. And I think that that is a bit too drastic. I think that certainly there are a number of items there, and we could go through them if you want to, which makes sense to alter how they are handled, both by the BGC or by BAC and how they should be handled. But I don't think that the essential structure of the two committees should be changed because it relieves some of the work that the BAC, that the board would have to do and places more of a burden on the entire body. Deciding whether some particular item is ready for board consideration, I think, is a necessary thing to be done and not by the entire board. And we have seen that. We have seen proposals for work plans by advisory committees suggested that they go back to the advisory committee and take another look at certain things that were not addressed in the work plan. And that has saved the entire board a fair amount of time, and it's not necessary for the board to get involved in that kind of detail. There are, you want, when the board gets something, I think it should be refined to a degree where there are only major issues, and we shouldn't have to deal with the issues of the editing of how it is done. That should be taken care of before it gets to the board. And I think that boards that attempt to do editing on the spot don't do a good job. This is editing by a large committee on the fly, and that doesn't work generally. So I would, I would not want to do away with both committees. When they were initially formed, or when the BGC was formed, I was not in favor of it. And I'm, it has some functions that are, I think, necessary to be done. Maybe not all of the functions that are currently assigned to it should be continued.
Was that the completion of your thoughts, Director Fleischer?
For now.
Anyone else? Director Patraine?
I'd like to react in terms of the, not only the content of the materials that were before us in the package, but the notes from our former colleagues, Julie Bitzer, Karen Anton, and John John Mooney, who've served, at least all served five or six years on the board itself and have been very active in the community. And what I've found in my own personal experience over, you know, the three-plus years that I've been on the board, is that we tend to chase the bright new penny on issues that come before. So we bounce from issue to issue. And, you know, it's going to be repetitive from what people have said, but we have to become more efficient. And that only, not only relates to us as board members, but to the staff because they have to take all the discussion, concentrate that, and then come back with something that makes sense, and then prepare for the next meeting. So I know we were talking last night that this is either the second or third meeting for many of the board members this week, this week. And then I look at the staff and they're here probably four nights a week, and almost every week. So can we do things differently? And I really want to hang on what one recommendation that Karen made, which was, we haven't looked at the governance model that we follow. We have a very different management team than when it was last done. We have a very different environment that we exist in and are moving towards, very different. This is not steady state to a pool every five years kind of environment. We are now moving into a lot of work and a lot of expense. We are, I have, I have, just anecdotally, I think our membership is beginning to change again. I know in my own neighborhood, there are the, the houses are turning over to much younger families with children, where for the first, first 15 years we lived in, in our home, I never saw a child under 15 years old. So all those things are changing. And I think rather than to focus, you know, on one example that should be changed, we should be looking at the governance structure overall to see where, what's effective, what we can streamline, and how we can make the process work for everybody, including the membership. Because, you know, even this evening, what, I don't know, you know, I'm not on Zoom, so I can't tell you how many people are on, but it's not a lot. And we need to, we need to generate some membership enthusiasm to participate. And one of the things that will do that, I think, and Jalal is, is already, is already recognized, that is shorten the length of the meetings. And be, have them be efficient and pointed and have good discussions, but terminated discussions. So I'll leave it there, I'll leave it there for now.
Director Dodd?
So I'm going to endorse so many comments made by others. So first of all, I agree that a review of our governance structure might be appropriate at this point. I agree that our meetings get too long, and we would not benefit in our board meetings and in the ability of members to participate in those meetings if we bring things to the board in a less finished state. I don't think we need to be having all of us involved in wordsmithing. Those need to be worked out before we come to a full board meeting. And so I do think it's time to make some reviews. Whether or not the suggestions that are currently being made are the right ones, I don't actually know. But I agree that we need to look again at how we function, given the changes that are coming ahead as we have more facility replacements or more changes to be made in our physical environment of what the association offers and controls. So I would endorse a review of our governance structure, as Karen Anton said well.
I'll start with just saying I agree with Director Dodd's statement of just the overall concept of a review of the governance structure, I think, is appropriate. And so this conversation is, I'm glad we're finally having this conversation. The second thing I'll say, and this is really on more of a personal note, I've had, I've been on the board now for about four or five months, and I've had a really, really positive experience at BAC. I know previous committees may, you know, that experience may have differed for others, but working, working on that committee has been, one, we've, we've never failed to hit quorum, which has been great to see. I think the ownership and the inclusiveness of that committee has been really good. John's made it a point that anyone is allowed to be there. Anyone is allowed to be a part of the executive discussions. And I know for a fact that Erwin has joined us on a number of occasions, Travis has joined us on a number of occasions, and I think that's been really positive to hear their comments before we make a vote because it doesn't just feel like four people are running and setting the agenda for everybody. It feels like there's a good portion of the board understanding what's to come and at least giving input to the members that are making some votes. That doesn't mean BAC's flawless, it doesn't mean it can't be improved, it doesn't mean that there's certain aspects of it that are duplicative and unnecessary. But I do believe that it has been helpful both for the board to actually bring an agenda in a smaller setting so that we're not working on unrefined products or agendas in a official setting or official board setting. And I've also found it helpful maybe for staff to have an ability to test out certain pieces of unrefined content, collect information, understand what they may need to go back to the drawing board on, where they could be more precise, and then bring more product to the full board that we take for granted maybe, but has taken a month or so to get to the point that it is. So anyway, I, I guess if we were to change some of the structure and, Director Koshak, this is in no way, like, these are ideas that you have spent a lot of time on, just coming up with thoughts, concepts, right? And we can't have, we can't even wrap our heads around the idea of this unless somebody is willing to do that. So this is not in any way to take a shot at any potential options that you've laid out for us tonight. But I'm concerned that if we do bring it back to the board, we may still, we lose the ownership at least, and it's tough because BGC, I guess, hasn't met even with those people being appointed to those positions. They, they haven't been at that session or enough to make quorum. But like, I feel like there's a sense of ownership on BAC that we show up, we have a job to do, we do the job for the board, and I know that if I'm not there, or if we're not there to meet quorum, we're going to have a really challenging month as a broader board to get the work done that we need to. And if we take it to the board and we don't, we, we just have a collective ownership of this has to get done, but who knows who's going to do it? I, I fear that it may isolate the power even more than it already is on setting agendas and selecting committees or nominating members for committees. So I would just caution against that. I think whatever we do end up doing, I think, having specific schedules, having specific names attached to duties is the only way you're going to create a sense of ownership that people will take seriously and then use it to help generate content for the board. If we leave it open for all of us to very easily pass the buck and give it to whoever is willing to be there that night, then we may not be very effective at the end of the day. So, thanks.
So I've been trying to get this thing on our agenda for quite some time because I believe it's time to get rid of both of these committees. BAC has been used over the years to disenfranchise five of the board members, to control an agenda, and the next president may not be as open-minded as I am in running BAC. And I don't think you ought to leave it there to the discretion of a future president. I've never seen a board operations committee in any organization I've ever been associated with, whether that was the National Candeliers Child and Cancer Foundation, where 40,000 type A personalities were bound to determine that their kid was not going to die of cancer. That wrestling that crowd is really interesting. But what I've been observing on BAC, it has been used to delay board consideration of important items. It has been used to prevent the majority of the board, five members are not on BAC, from being able to get work done or bring an issue to the full board. I don't want the staff to get blindsided, right? So we shouldn't have a situation where someone can bring up an issue on a new business and expect the board to act on it that night. But I also don't think, in most organizations, deliberative organizations, anyone can put an item on the agenda, and the presiding officer's only issue is, where does it go on the agenda? And if somebody wants to add an item to an agenda at the beginning of the night, you can move to add the item to the agenda. Under our BAC operation, you can't do that, okay? Because of BAC, you have to send that item to BAC before it can come back to the board. Okay, well, that can be up to nine weeks between when the issue gets surfaced and when the board can even think about it or debate it. We all got elected. All nine of us got elected. All nine of us should have the ability to get something on the agenda without having to go through this labyrinth of process in order to bring it back. So that's why I want to get rid of BAC, because I want to empower all nine of us and not limit the power to just four of us. Now, I also think we don't want to blindside the board, the staff. And so my concept would be that we adopt a new resolution, a new operating resolution that says that anybody can bring, any board member can propose an item for the agenda, pick a number, I'm going to staff, 10 days, seven days before either the working meeting or the regular meeting. The idea is that the working meeting would be more free-form and be not, we would not be anticipating actually adopting anything at a work session. It would be an opportunity to thrash ideas out and then actually vote on something at what we call a regular meeting. I've served on BGC, I have observed BGC. I've served on BGC, I have observed BGC, I understand how BGC got correct, created. I also know how BAC got created. And the creation of BAC was intended for the purpose of disenfranchising board members. That's what it was about, and that's how it's been used. I'm working very hard to make sure that doesn't happen during my tenure, but my term as president ends in March, okay? I don't know what's going to happen the next time. But I don't want this tool there for people, for five members of this board to be disenfranchised. And it shouldn't take us nine weeks to get an issue in front of the full board. And that's what happens now. And so we don't have the time to wait for something, to wait for nine weeks for an issue to get resolved by this body. You have to put it on the BAC agenda, the BAC has to act on it. If you missed the date, well, you know, if PrAC has a resolution and they come up with a resolution after the BAC meeting, they got to wait to the next BAC meeting, and they got to wait to the next board meeting, and now it's 10 weeks later. That doesn't make any sense. So I, I'm not worried about, if, if something needs wordsmithing, this body can always say, I'm appointing, or can ask the president to appoint a working group to go work on it, much like we did at Director Gray, which is suggestion on Resolution 5. And say, we're going to task the three of you to go meet with staff or meet with somebody and come back to the board with a proposal. That's easy. That's, that happens all the time in bodies that I've served on. But what I, it has been clear to me in observing RA over the years, before I came on the board and since I've been on the board, that these, these two processes hobble the board and overburden the staff. And I think we can move things along faster. I think we don't need to have staff out four nights a week. We're wearing them out, we're burning them out. You know, we've had a fair amount of turnover in the board liaison position. And the board liaison position has to come to all of these meetings. So my view is, let's look at the functions that each of these two committees perform, and let's figure out another way of getting it done. I mean, BGC hasn't had a meeting when?
Not this term.
This term year. They haven't had a meeting because they haven't had quorum. Well, have you missed it? Has, has anything not been taken care of because BGC didn't have a meeting? You know, when you don't have a meeting and you're still operating, it kind of tells you, well, I didn't need that cane, you know? I didn't need that walker. I can walk fine. I'm not expecting you all to come to a conclusion tonight. I, I want, I would invite you all, and I'll invite staff to, to express their opinions if they have any. I'd ask you to take a look at the paper that Vice President Justack put together, and let's put, Brittany, let's put this on the October agenda for another conversation. And let's have, let's think about how can we operate more efficiently and at the same time deliberately without great, without it taking nine weeks to get an issue in front of the board. Director Gray, which wants to speak, I think.
Yeah, and, and this is, forgive me, I'm playing a little bit of devil's advocate here so that we can just throw some of these ideas out. We don't do enough of this discussion, in my mind, in this type of open setting. So, John, you just, you just added something to the agenda in one second. You didn't go through BAC, you just added something to the agenda for October in one second, meaning that that can happen. It can, right, in a variety of ways, not just what you just did right now.
This is carryover of this item.
Fantastic. But it can happen because there are avenues that are not exclusive to that.
Trevor, go back and read the BAC resolution.
I, I understand, but we also operate, a lot of what we're saying tonight is, is ideally the way we'd love it to work, but in reality, I'm trying to think about how it will play. And one of the things that I think is a little bit different from our discussion and the reality is, the work and the time to do the work, I don't think will change. What will change is how we wrap it together and how efficient we are at getting it all done, but the work still has to occur. And, and I worry that we think that by removing the two committees, now, I fully appreciate the idea that we, that BGC hasn't met. So if something isn't actually meeting and we're not producing any results from it, it's one of those things like, if you haven't opened the box after you've moved for, for a year, you probably can just donate the box at that point, regardless of what's in it. I, I completely understand that. But I, I do want to make sure that we wrap our heads around that the workload will not be lighter. It will be, it will be more intense for more people. Now, whether they choose to be a part of that work is up to them. But that just burdens the folks that do care and that do want to be a part of it. And that's why I like putting names on things, because it puts you in a position of, you're not making quorum, you're the one that's turning this down. Whereas as a broader board, it's very easy to hide in the cracks. So again, it's not that I disagree with the idea that these two committees could be refined, I absolutely think they could, or that one could potentially just be flat out eliminated. It's, it's trying to make sure that we are, we are working in the reality of how people have served on this board and will continue to serve on this board with also keeping in mind how we can be more efficient.
So let me just clarify something. When we have something on the agenda and we don't dispose of it, you would automatically go over to the next meeting? The next meeting is our first budget session?
Yep.
So I'm suggesting with the consent of the body, then go over to the meeting after that because we want to spend that next meeting on the budget. So it wasn't me changing the agenda, it's already on the agenda.
Fully appreciated. But, but how quickly and how easy, you know, I get it, I get it, but.
Right, go ahead.
Two things. Number one, we have time-sensitive responsibilities like the budget that is going to consume a major portion of the, of the board meeting, regular board meetings from now through November. Secondly, as Trevor's brought out, if you want to really have a good discussion on an item such as this, which I think is important, I don't dismiss, you know, getting rid of committees, I think that's probably a good idea, is somebody, somebody's still got to do the work for the issue unless we want to just have, you know, we're going to get rid of these two committees and we're going to have a discussion on it. Well, the problem is that we tend to have these discussions and they go blah, 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 after about three minutes, it becomes just noise. So we've got to have some structure around how we get things done because that, that will be efficient and it's fair, it's only fair to the board members as well staff to understand, you know, if you will, the scope of an issue. So we can focus the, focus an issue, focus our discussion so we can make a decision as opposed to saying, well, we forgot these three issues, we got to come back to it six times before we can address them all. And then still have a discussion over the whole thing because we've forgotten what we first discussed.
How many times has this item been on our agenda?
I'm not, I'm not dismissing, I think it's, we need to look at this in a much more comprehensive way, so.
Do you have staff, anything, have anything to share on the issue?
I think just a couple of comments. I think the fact that the board meets once a month causes significant issues because there is the lag time, that, that becomes the eight, nine week, you know, if something doesn't happen, oh my God, it's so long before you can get back together. I think that's a significant issue. My experience thus far, and admittedly, it's 13 months now, so that's probably about nine total meetings, and to Jennifer's point, BGC has, you know, been canceled a couple of times. To me, if there's a BAC meeting, it, it should be simply to look at whether something ready for the board to talk about or not. It's kind of a yes, no. My experience has been it's not that at all. It's a discussion of the merits, is it good or bad? And there are these lengthy, long decisions, and then four members are deciding whether to move forward with something or not. And that causes the weaponizing problem. So, and I, and I've observed that. What I have struggled with is in the absence of that, exactly how to move something, get something forward to an agenda, because you still have the eight to nine week lag problem. I think where you're all ultimately headed, you know, is how do you all want to make decisions and work through the work as efficiently as possible? I've got all sorts of ideas on that. My, my observation for BAC is, it hasn't served its purpose since I've been here. It's been more of a, a small board meeting to discuss issues and then put them on agendas. Or say, well, we don't have enough time, so we'll push this one back. And that leads to those other, those other issues. And not entirely, I mean, that's just, that has happened, I've observed it. The other thing with BGC, just not, not totally sure, I mean, and thank you, Jennifer, for putting all this together, if you go through the, the kind of, what are they supposed to be doing? I think there's been a little bit of inconsistency, you know, in that, is BGC supposed to be reviewing all the resolutions? Yes, no? Are they, are they supposed to start there or does the board refer something to them to then come back? So I think those things have come up, you know, in the past. So I, I think BGC could be folded in somewhere else, I think relatively easily, or ideas are thrown out here now, like, well, if there's something you really want to look at, it could be an ad hoc thing, as compared to having a standing meeting anticipating that you need to be reviewing resolutions on an ongoing basis forever. So that one would be the easiest to eliminate from my standpoint. I think until we get our hands around how to conduct the business through work-study sessions or getting you all comfortable with what you're deciding on, that's the key issue that comes back to BAC, and then you have continuances and other things that cause the, the delay. So anyways, BGC would be the easiest to eliminate from my standpoint.
Any other thoughts?
Do we have, does it say action?
Nope. Intentionally, no action.
Okay.
If I, would it be consistent with the feeling of the board for the president to work with General Counsel to come up with a resolution that eliminated BGC just as a starting point and move those functions someplace else? Is there somebody, is the majority of the board think that's a bad idea?
I think there's, there ought to be some board involvement in that, in how that gets done.
Well, no, the idea would be to bring it back to, to give, to draft something and bring it back to the board.
Couldn't that be, you know, accelerated by adding a couple directors to that?
Happy to. I, I'm just looking for, can we move forward with that initiative? Are there folks ready to move forward with that initiative to eliminate BGC and move its functions someplace else? And I'm, I, I know Director Flashman wasn't real thrilled with that idea from his earlier comments, but I'm looking for the rest of the board to tell me what they think, if that's something that's worthwhile. And I'm happy to have somebody suggest that some number of us work on that with counsel. Director Mappar?
John, may I rephrase what you proposed and see what you think about that? Instead of going in with this pre-assumed position that says eliminate BGC and then follow and do something else, may I suggest you look at that, look, look at the entire activities that point to a justification for eliminating the BGC and moving its functions in a different place. It's the same thing, but I'm not going in with the position that says eliminate BGC, start with that and do something else. What I'm saying is, make it a little bit higher level so that you're actually responding to the concerns that some other people might have that say, that might come across as, you've got this three-biased position, you want to eliminate BGC, and you're finding, you're finding a way to sort of do that immediately anyway. There's a subtle difference.
Director Dodd.
I would just like to add that we have had a non-functioning BGC and we have had our CEO endorse the idea that elimination of the BGC is an idea worth considering. And so I think that starting there does make sense. So I would endorse what you have proposed, President Farrell.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was trying to articulate, and you said it better than I did. Thank you.
Okay. So who wants to work in General Counsel to look at the BGC functions and see what we do with them?
I'll volunteer because technically I'm scared of it. And that would be wrong for me not to volunteer.
Okay, so Director Justack, Director Mappar, and Director Patrine?
Sure.
I'll make that appointment unless there's an objection. Can we ask you all to be ready to come back in October? Is that fair?
Yep.
With something for us to consider and maybe act on? Is that fair?
Yep.
I see and hearing no dissent, so ordered. All right. Thank you for that. That was, that's the kind of conversation I would like us to have at most meetings and to try and figure out a way for our board meetings to be of that style going forward. Speaking of things like that, the next item is the land use committee and creation of the land use committee. Again, I'm not going to ask us to act on it tonight. I want to start the conversation. There are two things to be thought about here, and I think that General Counsel Champ circulated a rewritten land use resolution number one. Did everybody get that? I'm looking, everybody? I looked at, I didn't even know we had Resolution One, and if you read the existing Resolution One, what a mess. I mean, it was just, holy smokes. There weren't enough breadcrumbs for me to get home from here. So he's rewritten it, and I think it works. Again, I'm asking for action on it tonight. And then the other thing we would need to do is amend Committee Resolution Number Four. But I think it's time for us to get back into this business because 3,000 multifamily units have been approved without joining RA. That costs us $2.3 million every year. There are other concerns that MTAC might have, there are concerns that EAC might have, there are concerns that DRB might have on projects that are out on non-covenant land, and we need a way to share those concerns with Planning, the Hunter Mill Planning Commissioner and with the Hunter Mill Supervisor. I have been to several land use, what do they call it, P&amp;Z committee meetings. The loudest voices on that crowd make it very clear that they feel no allegiance or affinity with RA. And the issues that RA cares about, as, as in joining RA, is not something they're going to pursue. So if we're going to advance the interests of our membership to get these multifamily units in the TSA to join RA, we're going to have to do it ourselves. No one else is going to do it. And so that's why I asked Tony to redraft Land Use Committee, Land Use Resolution Number One and the amendment to Land Use Resolution Number Four. What I have in mind would be that it would, much like Finance Committee, is that the Land Use Committee would have some number of board members on it and then some member, some number of non-board members on it. And I'm not, I'm not bound to any number of either. Obviously, you don't want to have a committee of 90 because that gets, like, gets a little difficult. But I think we can ask, and I wouldn't ask this full board to sit through land use presentations because, you know, there are some people on the board who don't find that the most entertaining way to spend an evening. But I think that we can task this committee with an interact, initial interaction with developers, make recommendations to the full board as to what an RA position ought to be on a land use question. It would only be, just for clarity's sake, on legislative acts, okay? I, I don't want to be clear what I'm talking about. I'm talking about comp plan amendments, I'm talking about rezonings, I'm talking about Crawford Condition Amendments, I'm talking about final development applications, conceptual development applications, special exceptions, special permits. That's it. We cannot get involved in site plans or subdivision applications. Statute's very clear, the case law is very clear, that abutting landowners have no standing to get involved in site plan or subdivision review. To do so would expose, would expose us to claim for damages. Free cases down that road. You know, let's stay away from that. We don't need to get involved in that. But the other issue, and so those two kind of applications are what we call administrative decisions. The applicant is entitled to an approval of the site plan or the subdivision. The other applications, the list I gave you, which is extensive, those are legislative decisions. And the governing body, or the BCA in the case of special permits, they're free to say no. And there's almost no recourse on the part of RA or on the part of an applicant to appeal what the governing body does. They, it's a purely legislative act, having been involved in more than a few of those kinds of litigation and taught, taught a few courses in it. kinds of litigation and taught a taught a few courses in it. So that would be the limit of our work on the land use committee, legislative acts. And we would then put together a recommendation, as is done in every other magisterial district here in Fairfax County, and pass a written recommendation on to the Planning Commissioner and on to the member of the board. I want to point something out, and I don't know if we've made any progress on getting our subscription to the Fairfax newsletter. But when an application is filed, that's public information. When the application is submitted, and typically, and I tell clients if they're asking me, how long is it going to take to get my zoning heard? I tell them it's 18 months. Okay? If it's 18 months, and it is 18 months in most cases, that's plenty of time for us to invite or this committee to invite an applicant to come in and talk to our committee. That's plenty of time for our for this committee to put together input from MTAC or input from EAC or input from the community at large and come back to us with a recommendation before it goes to the Planning Commission. And so I think there's I think we have an obligation to try and fill this gap that right now is going unfulfilled. Thoughts, comments? Anybody?
Do you see this conflicting with either DRB or the present P&amp;Z?
Well, the present DRB, no, because if you read the if you read the draft resolution one, we if it's covenanted land, DRB does their job. If it's not covenanted land, if it's not part of RA, we invite DRB to come participate in the review. So I don't see a conflict there. The P&amp;Z committee is appointed by nobody but themselves. They're accountable to nobody, and they forswear any relationship with a Reston Association specifically. So if they don't want to play, we have interests that need to be advanced. And the only way we can advance it is to have a committee that looks at the applications, develops a position for the for the board to adopt, and makes a recommendation to the board. Otherwise, the interest of the association aren't being covered. And P&amp;Z has made it very clear, they're not interested in fulfilling that role. So they want to keep having meetings and making their positions, but one of the inputs I get from Commissioner Carter is he'll go to a P&amp;Z committee, they don't produce a written recommendation. They they just sit around and gab for a while. And, you know, what's the difference between P&amp;Z and CPR and Reston 2020 and what was yours, SOS? And this one and that one and rescue Reston and ah, na, 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 na. And all these people, they don't respect. We're the only people who are elected by the people who live here, this body. And we have the greatest credibility. So I've talked way too much.
Mike is on.
Mike is on. Mike, glad to have you. Nice, there he is, in front of the in front of the library. Have you read all those books? Never mind. So it's on.
That's what I was doing. That's what I was doing before the meeting.
Very good. Well, while you've not joined us, I don't know if you had any thoughts on BGC and BAC and if you wanted to share those, Mike. And then I want to come back to Land Use Committee.
No, I'm good, John. I think it ought to be someone ought to take a hard look at it. I mean, the only concern I have about it is we'd be reducing the number of opportunities for for members to address the board. Right now, they have on these issues, they have three. They've got BGC, they've got BAC, and they've got the board meeting. And if we get rid of those two committees, then we're we're be cutting that down. I'm not sure if that's what we want to do.
I think that's a fair comment, Mike. Thank you for that. Anybody have anything on Land Use Committee? Any thoughts?
Yeah. Scratch them. Sorry about timing. I read through the draft resolution on.
The rewrite on one? The rewrite on one?
Yeah. Yeah, I had a lot of some technical concerns and some more general concerns and some confusions. And what I would like to do is to talk with Tony about it in more detail rather than tie this group up with all of these observations.
Are there some global issues you would like the board's input on?
I'm sorry?
Are there some global issues?
Yes, yes. Well, one thing here is that you, in the first one of A1, it's an invitation, really. It's a request for the developer to come in and talk. And in in some instances in the past, when I was on EAC, and we were concerned about what was going on with proposals for various developments or redevelopments, really, and we looked at what they were proposing and how it impacted the the property. And we looked also at what the Reston Comprehensive Plan had to say about those particular properties. And oftentimes, no, well, occasionally, more than occasionally, the developer was paying no attention to what the limitations were in the comprehensive plan. And as the EAC had no power to invite anybody to come and talk to us, we simply drafted some oppositions to what they were doing and and let them know and let the board know what our position was and substantiated it. And it would seem to me that this is this makes the progress along the path that you've proposed here or has been proposed dependent on the developer appearing. And I don't think that should be the case. You can invite him, but I don't think we should just, what if he says, no, I'm not coming?
Well, in that case, we would have the ability to look at the filing that that is made and to offer our comments.
Which is which is what should be done in any of it.
Understood. But I I think the invitation is just a matter of courtesy.
Okay. But it would seem to me that the description of what flows is dependent on the presentation. And it's it's a question of wording.
Yep. That's fine. I I take your point, and if you want to offer some corrective wording, that'd be great.
Yeah. There are other things that are, for me, confusing in terms of the order that they occur and the timing and things like that. And so what I think would be more profitable for me to do would be to sit down with Tony and just go through it with him.
I I'm happy to join you, given the fact that I I worked with.
That's fine. I would suspect that that's the case.
Given my experience in other magisterial districts as to how it's done there.
Yeah. It's it's sometimes a question of wording or clarity or thought. And so maybe we could the three of us sit down and let's see if anybody else wants to join us.
Sure.
I'm not sure everybody wants to wordsmith things.
Anybody else? I'm sorry, will you will you finish?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would be interested to hear our CEO's thoughts on this.
A couple of thoughts. I think the one of my observations about passing my one-year mark is land use in Reston, I'll say nature abhors a vacuum. And in other major metropolitan areas around the country, there would be incorporated municipalities in the size of Fairfax County that simply don't exist here. And when I say nature abhors a vacuum, issues of land use are very important to our community and the ability to help influence those things, I think, are therefore an important service that we could offer. I think the idea of a land use committee is a good idea. I think it's not defined in the actual resolution with roles and responsibilities, defined enough yet to to just move forward with it. So when I look at like the fiscal committee and it says, here's exactly what their charge is going to be, that sets up, like in this case, the land use resolution one, that's one of the duties they might be responsible for, but there could be other things that we would want them to do. The other component, without jumping the gun, because you won't see my draft budget until two weeks from now, but thinking about how to staff the land use component if we get more aggressive or less aggressive in that space, depending on what you all want to do, is just an outstanding question. So in the past, I would argue, we were not as effective as we could have been in that space. We were trying to do it off the desk of our previous chief operating officer. Going way back, of course, we had a full-time land use planner person, but I would say over the last several years, it was not as effective as we're trying to also make organizational change. So if we want to be more prominent in this space, I think we should think about how to staff it appropriately. But part of that is is defining the roles and responsibilities because, as you're all talking about committees at BAC and BGC, if you imagine the amount of work it takes to prep for a PrAC meeting or a fiscal meeting, that's a fairly significant amount of work. So depending on where those swim boundaries are, I'd give you a better idea of what it takes, you know, to do that. Is there an opportunity cost or is it just an add? You know, that sort of thing.
Well, and one of the things you and I have talked about is do we do we need a full-time person on staff or can we outsource the can we outsource the support to a planner who works for an engineering company or a planner who works for a law firm? Previously, we had had it each way. We had a we had a full-time planner on staff for a year or so, and they got a better job. And then subsequent to that, we staffed by having a planner who was an employee of a local law firm, and they billed us by the hour. So I I'm not sure, I don't know the answer as to how to make that happen. But what we really need is somebody who's going to look at the Fairfax Newsletter, which comes out twice a month, and pick up the new submissions that are made in our in the in Hunter Mill. And and then get them, you know, that that will give you who the contact information is. The submissions are available, and and you can get copies of them from the planning department and bring them to that committee. I I think the thing I'd like to try and stick with back at the beginning is advising the the board on applications. If there's something beyond that, I don't want to start out there unless it's something that's, you know, it it's essential that it has to happen. I think just getting us in the in the flow of commenting on applications is the beginning. And as we evolve this function, if there are other functions for the land use committee to take on, okay. But I I don't know that I want to have a really broad assignment to begin with. That just doesn't my true sense. I I think it's going to take us some time to walk through, walk. I think we need to crawl before we, you know, marathon.
I think a question for y'all to consider, it didn't come tonight, but the role and function of MTAC and multimodal transportation systems that work through the land use system, they overlap, you know, and so then you could potentially have multiple committees looking at the similar or identical issues.
Well, in that resolution, we have a representative of MTAC participating in the review. So that that committee would have something. But there's also been a conversation that I've had with the current chair of MTAC. They're having a problem getting people who want to serve on the committee. And part of the reason is they get really frustrated because they got to work with VOD. And anybody who was here last night knows what that's like. I have talked to the chairman about, well, maybe the the answer is to focus on trails and bike paths, which was the original. They were trail, they were pedestrian and that trail committee originally. And then at some point along the line, they started looking at at all kinds of highway issues. And our ability to have any impact on highways is, yeah, good luck. I can't supervisor Alcorn can't get VOD to be responsive. I don't know how any of us can expect VOD to be responsive to us. So that that might be the the answer to that issue. Any other thoughts? I've talked way too much. I'm sorry. Director Patrine?
I think land use is an inherently complicated and ever-moving issue, and particularly in Fairfax County, as you well know. Just the way you've defined it is one small piece of land use issues that not only do impact but will impact going in the future. And without spinning out of control, if the focus of this committee is is primarily to strongarm, I'll just, developers into becoming members of RA.
Influence.
We're going to have to strongarm them. Yeah. To get developers to become members of RA, laudable, very laudable. But there there are so many other aspects that many people in Reston have fought for, including MTAC, in not only the Comprehensive Plan but in the Urban Design Guidelines, in Parking Reimagined, all these issues which will not only have impact on new development but any renovation that we do, particularly in the parking area, is all going to cock them. So it's it's a it's one of those areas that I that I think unless it is very carefully defined, it people are going to be upset that you're not going to meet their expectations as you found out with getting MTAC members. So it because you you have to, we're not a government. It was one of the frustrations of last night's meeting is why can't you why can't you just move this stupid sidewalk to where we think it ought to be? And it's like, it's not our sidewalk. You don't understand that.
Nor do we set the speed limits.
No. And as as one of the people mentioned last night after the meeting was over, that is that's there's no egress to any other part of Reston other than in and out of Barton Hills. So anybody that's speeding along there, probably 80% or better live there.
Live there.
So and our, you know, drunk driving there, you know, is the one fellow got off on last night.
Yes. That was entertaining.
Let me just say, you know, as as long as we can very carefully define it and really set expectations low about what we can accomplish, no problem. But it's going to be a lot of goddamn work because my wife has been on P&amp;Z for five or six years.
Yes.
And she spends hours on each application as it comes through. And they are, I think she should come and talk to you all about what's involved. And you'll you'll and you're you're right, they don't pay attention to her either, so P&amp;Z does. But it is a it is a it is an issue, and I won't take just a couple more seconds, that Fairfax County has a has a a now-deceased attorney-in-chief of mine once told me Fairfax County does zoning by contract. So as long as you come up with the dough, you can just about do anything you want within reason.
I I would suggest to whoever told you that, A, doesn't know land use law, and B, is cynical as hell.
He was cynical. He was a land use attorney.
Well, I I respectfully disagree with his characterization, but we can move on. So do I, Director Justack, I'm sorry?
So I I agree with the comment about MTAC. I actually almost feel like MTAC could potentially roll into this committee. But MTAC's not current in the current language, so we should consider.
It is in in the rule, it is in.
Land use resolution one, but not in the land use committee.
Because if we don't have an MTAC anymore, if you follow me.
Well, yes, but we tried that BGC and that didn't work, so I'm just saying, I think that I think that MTAC could be rolled in and be more effective in other ways than what they're currently doing, and I I wouldn't object to them being rolled into this.
In Resolution Number Four, we could take MTAC out.
Yep.
Okay. If you were to.
But this is a.
If you would suggest in Resolution Four that we substitute the land use committee for MTAC, I I think there might be some support for that idea.
Well, MTAC isn't in, yeah, well, but MTAC isn't in this, isn't in Committee Resolution Number Four because it's not a board committee, it's an advisory committee, so it has a different resolution.
Okay.
So we'd we'd have to bring up that resolution to to do it. But I I would be in support of that. I've seen I've seen them struggle, and I've also seen us struggle to take the good work that they're doing and do something with it. And I'd like to see it be more effective. So I think this might be an area that we could morph for them to participate in. From out for my outside role, as a member, I found it very, very difficult to get RA to move on land use issues that were very impacting to the community, community. And the reason why a group that I participate with, SOS, as John said, even exists is because we didn't feel like we were getting any traction from RA on a very important issue that affected the community. So I I would like to see RA spend more time advocating for that and less of our public time in creating all of these really fun alphabet soup. time in creating all of these really fun alphabet soup names of organizations to do that advocacy, because I think we're stronger as a community with RA than we are with small pocket groups across the association. And probably would have the backing of more expertise to be more effective in, in working with developers in doing that. I also think that this land use committee resolution has site plans in it, so we should take that out.
Have to take that out.
And finally, I would say, we talked at the last work session about advocacy.
Yes.
And used that concept. And what I really see is, you know, the biggest advocacy area that we probably have in this association is somewhat related to land use issues, although there may be some outside of land use. But I feel like moving in this direction is moving in the direction of creating an advocacy branch, or an advocacy arm of RA that has been lacking in the last several years. I think it was pretty active, leading up to when the Metro was coming to town, and certainly in the last master plan redo related to that. I feel like we were probably a little bit less effective in this, this redo of the master plan. And if we really had some people that understood this and concentrating on it from an R, a specific RA perspective, because the board doesn't have time to get into these details, that it could be really beneficial for the community and also for RA as an organization to make us stronger.
Gee, thanks a lot.
No. I spent a lot of time on the comp plan. A lot. And I think we could have been more effective, but we did what we could, and I.
We got some very good results.
And we got, yeah, we definitely got some, some results, but it's a 300 and some-page document, and there's a lot more in there. I, I feel like we could have picked that. And then I, I wanted to address John Mooney's comments related to the, the previous iteration of the land use committee, or whatever we called it back then, because it was never an official committee. I've had some pushback about bringing that back, because I do think that there's interest from the different community organizations that used to participate in that meeting, that it wasn't a public meeting, and the, and members could not participate in that meeting, and that there were just, you know, invitees from RA staff to attend that meeting. And I certainly wasn't involved in it in the beginning, but, you know, after I became involved with land use issues and created SOS, then RA called and said, hey, we have this group that meets, do you want to meet? And they never made any, you know, resolutions, or, or passed any motions, or, or anything like that. But I do think, as Mooney had commented, not having RA bring those people together made us less strong as individual organizations. And we're not sharing the information that we used to share about what's coming down the road, what have you heard, who have you talked to, what should we be paying attention to. So we've lost that, and if there is a fear that getting a group like that back together is then not being transparent to the membership, because it wasn't a publicly noticed meeting and members were invited, then it should be replaced with something. And if that means we need to go the official route and replace it with a committee, then I'm all for it, because we've lost traction the last few years, for sure. Those are my comments.
So is, is there any, yeah, absolutely. Is there anybody who doesn't want to see something brought back to the October meeting on land use? Do you want to see anybody who thinks that's a bad idea?
I'm just going to mention, because I know what's coming, there are going to be a lot of things on your October BACH agenda fighting for time that night.
So, I mean. I don't care about the BACH agenda, but if you're telling me on the October board agenda?
Well, to get through BACH, to get to the board agenda.
Okay. Hang on. This doesn't have to go back to BACH. This is already on the board agenda. So we're deferring further action to a date certain, Mr. CEO. I think I'm hearing you say that October might be aggressive in picking up time on an October agenda. This is already in the breast of the body. So are you suggesting that we push it off till November? Till summer?
I, I am suggesting that September, October, and November are shaping up to be enormous agendas for you all. Not to suggest how to prioritize those things, just simply raising that we're in isolation right now, and in no particular order, we have the community survey, you're going to want to spend some time with. We have the budget, which could be super smooth, or you might want to spend a lot of time with. And then we're kicking off the deed update process at BGC, and we'll likely need to get back in front of you before the end of the year and start talking about 24, just to name a few enormous things, amongst the other things that you've already said need to come back before the end of the year. So I'm just, I've got a list, and all I'm suggesting is, want to put to October, just so everyone knows there's a lot of other things coming too. That was my only thought.
Well, we've got, we've got BGC and BACH, or we've got BGC coming back in October. Help me out here, because, you know, I don't want it to be next April and we're still screwing around with these two things.
Maybe we say no sooner than October.
No, we've got to set, we have to set it to a date certain.
Oh, we do.
Because we're continuing it from this agenda. So give me a suggestion. Hey, we don't have to take up BGC in October, we can take the BGC down to December, because they've been meeting so often.
Not knowing how you're, not knowing how you're going to want to react, we, we're putting some things out in the community survey about some potential ideas to help put that in front of you. And as I mentioned in the email I sent you, there's just an enormous amount of data that's, we're still trying to figure out how to put together right to, to give to you all. I think between that and the budget, your October meeting to have a really lengthy conversation is going to be limited. I would suggest November for this, because by that, hopefully we will be done with some of those other things, and you'll just be down to adopting the budget.
So you want to put, can we put both of them on November, or one of them on November?
I'm sorry, BGC and land use?
Right.
I think I'm hesitant to do a, a full-blown agenda forward discussion tonight. I only wanted to raise the issue. I mean, placing it on the October agenda, I, I don't see any issue with that. I just think when you get to your October BACH meeting and see what a draft October agenda is, you're going to have a discussion about pushing things off. That's all.
Okay. I need, under, under Robert's rules, I need a date certain to postpone it to. We can further postpone it once we get there, as we've been doing with this stuff, but I need a specific date.
So I would motion to postpone it to a date certain of October, regular board meeting for both, for land use. But what, well, did we do, we didn't do a motion on BGC, right?
No, well, I.
It was an understood item, I thought. We didn't do a motion. I'm happy to do a motion on both, because.
To October.
To Oc, to the October regular board meeting. And as a comment would say, we can push it beyond October, but at least there's some, there's a starting point. And, you know, if B, if BACH wants to do that, I would have no objections.
Director Fleishman has a thought.
If indeed the agendas for September, October, November are going to be crowded, does that mean that what we really should consider is at some point a second meeting in the month of the board to deal with a number of these issues that are not key issues for the progress of things that must be done, but we still want to do, and then, such as this meeting, hold another one for those purposes?
Brittany, can you send out a doodle for a second October meeting? And let's see if we can put this on that meeting? Put these two items on that meeting? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes. And whatever other items might be necessary.
Any other contracts, as an example. One of the things I.
So no one seconded my motion, so why don't you make that motion?
We're sorry?
No one seconded my motion, so why don't you make that motion to have a special meeting in October?
Well, it's okay. It's all right. That, that motion dies for like a second.
At least it died.
I'm going to take the suggestion as a motion, that the BGC issue and the land use committee issue be postponed to a special meeting on a date yet to be determined in October.
Second.
Second on that. And the discussion on that motion.
The only thing I would add is that there may be other things that you would want to add. I wouldn't make it exclusive to them.
No, I'm, I'll set that agenda like I set this agenda. All right. Hearing and seeing none, all those who pay will say aye.
Aye.
And anybody saying nay?
Nay.
If anybody's saying nay, that's nice. Director Collins, what's in you?
Because that gives you three meetings in October. Five, exactly, with your.
Director Collins, aye or nay? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Okay.
And is Director Johnson still not able to be with us?
He, he was at.
He'll still be at school.
He was at, his kids are back to school night. All right. The last item on tonight's agenda is the Lake Equity conversation, and I'll turn that over to Director Fleishman.
Okay. I provided the board, and for the board packet, a rather extensive memorandum, giving both the history of this resolution from December forward, and its purpose, and some things that I have been asked to look at, which has some suggestions for possible amendments to the resolution, or consideration of other things dealing with the resolution. And I provided for one, which would be that I be named the chair of the working group. And the reason for that is, as was pointed out in the meeting in July 27th, and I think earlier also, there needs to be someone to drive this forward from the board. And no one else stepped forward, frankly, and so I did. And I think that being a liaison does not give sufficient authority to make this work. And there is history where, for the special committee or working group that was formed to look at RA facilities, there was a board director who was made the chair of that working The second item has to do with concerns that were expressed by Mac with regard to staff time. And in giving some further thought to his concerns, I think that having the HR director as a member of this working group is something that we can bypass. And as long as the working group has access to the HR director when issues arise, that would be within her knowledge and ability to assist the, with the working group on. And so it wouldn't be necessary that she attend all of the meetings, or any of the meetings, except in a case where, when necessary for her to opine on something that would be helpful to the working group. So if that is acceptable, then that would be a change in what I have proposed in the memorandum, and it would constitute a second motion to alter the constitution of the working group by removing the HR director. There is another issue which I raised in, in the memorandum, which was the formation of an associate membership for the working group. It would be composed of people who had applied to be members, but were not chosen because of the limitation of spaces. And they, if, assuming certain considerations in the nature of their application and their interest, they could be members of the associate group. They would have a voice, and be present at all of the meetings, and participate fully, with the exception of voting. And further than, we suggested that there be additional members who would constitute associate members to be selected from South Lakes High School, and from the two fellowship houses in the RA jurisdiction, and others who might be appropriate, and who would be interested in applying, and fit the basic requirements. With regard to fulfilling the membership of the working group, there are six persons who interviewed. There were 11 who originally applied. Three have indicated that they are, they no longer have a continuing interest in being members, and we have received three new applications. None, however, as far, I don't know, there's one, I do not know from where the person comes. I haven't seen the application. There is one person from Hunterswood Dogwood, and one of the people who dropped out is from Hunterswood Dogwood. He was the only one. And there is someone from Lake Anne Tall Oaks, a non-Lakeside resident. And of course, the third one, we don't know. I'm assuming that he will appear before BACH to be interviewed, and hopefully so will the others who have not been interviewed by BACH so far. And even in the absence of members from North Point, I would suggest that the committee be formed and go forward. And we continue to, efforts to locate people who might fulfill the membership requirements from North Point, and bring them on as quickly as possible. But I think it would be a mistake to delay the formation of the committee, of the working group, and wait until if and when we're able to get, stimulate enough interest in the membership to come forward and apply to be members of that working group. Which doesn't mean that we would leave out, or that the, the working group would leave out consideration of North Point and Lake Newport. That would not be the case. And so I saw this evening, one opposition to the formation of the working group by the head of the Parks and Recreation Committee, and also another by a former chair of, president of the association. And I think that their oppositions to the formation of the working group are a mistake and supposition. And that is that the Parks and Recreation Committee is doing that work. I don't think it is. This is an intense look by people who have knowledge of the lakes, and who have experience in the kinds of things that we will be looking at. And who will be looking at what is it that exists in terms of minority participation, participation by people who do not have economic resources available to them, that people who live on the lakes do have, and the ready access to the lakes that they have. And I think the answers that was supplied by, and I read through this very quickly, this, just a few minutes before the board meeting commenced, the idea that there are boats for rental and things of that nature doesn't answer the question. Because what we are looking at is oftentimes people who do not have the knowledge, or the economic wherewithal, or other kinds of factors that will allow them to participate fully. And from my own experience, and from the experience of other people, and I, I recommend to you that you look at the YouTube of the board December 15th meeting of 2022, and you'll see that there was an impassioned statement with regard to why this was necessary. And I was told later that many people who work as members of, who work for the association came forward to the then-chair, or president of the, of the board, and expressed their understanding of why she was doing it, creating the, proposing the creation of the working group, and that it was necessary to plotting it. And many of them had, were quite emotional about it, I'm told. I wasn't present when they were talking to her. But I have had people come forward to me, without my seeking it, who are employees of the association, and made similar expressions. And so I think that these issues are not being addressed by Parks and Recreation. And I don't think that they're in a position, because of the nature of the membership, to be able to address it. We are trying to use, or have people who are, who have been, who have. who have those kinds of experiences on the committee, as well as those who have the privilege. And they look upon it more as a right than it's a privilege. And I remember attending several of the sessions of the Boats, Docks and Lakes Working Group. And I remember that many of the members who were there talking about boats and referred to it as our lake.
Yes.
And I took the opportunity to remind them that it was the lakes of all Reston members. And it was mere habit, and they, simply that was how they viewed it. This is our lake. And it's everybody's lakes, because everybody is paying for it. And it is Reston Association's lakes. And so we need to do more to make the lakes and the surrounding areas more inviting, more open, and enhance the participation of everyone, including those who are underserved and don't have the economic wherewithal but live in Reston.
You done?
I'm done.
Director Dog.
I will support what Director Fleishman has said about the need for this issue to be addressed. I too have been at a party on the lake, hosted by and attended by people who own property on the lake, and I've heard it referred to as "our" lake. And I've heard people who did not realize I was an RA board member talk about it as a problem that, it, the attitude seemed to be that those who are outsiders, who don't own property on the lake, don't belong here. And I think that's wrong-headed. And I think that people within RA, all RA members, need to have access to the lake, and that equity of that issue does need to be investigated. At the same time, having read the submission sent by Julie Britzer, who is the current head of PrAC, I believe, she proposes that I would like to ask the board to consider an expansion of the PrAC current community outreach and engagement task in the PrAC 2023-24 work plan to specifically and focus and recommend actions back to the board on lake access. And I would ask that those members who have applied to serve on the working group be directed to apply, join PrAC, and work with us on that comprehensive set of recommendations. So I do think the issue needs to be addressed, but I think it should be addressed within the framework of the PrAC committee, inviting and doing more outreach to broaden the number of, and the diversity of RA members who are engaged in the issue. I have not done everything I would like to do as a North Point Director to encourage more RA members to get engaged, because I know North Point District currently has no one who has expressed interest in the Equity Working Group, unless some of these new applications that I'm not familiar with might have come from North Point.
This one, I don't know.
One unknown, okay.
I don't know it.
So.
I don't know with respect to that.
Okay, okay. So again, I believe it's an issue that does need to be addressed, and we do need to put energy into reaching out to our membership to be sure that all those who are interested in this issue understand that they have an avenue to be heard and to address it. But I think it should be done under the aegis of PrAC, which is an existing committee.
Others? Ms. Fleishman?
Yeah. So as the PrAC liaison, I feel like it's a little bit of my obligation to talk a little bit about what Julie has brought to the table here and some of the concerns that she has raised. I feel my lack of inexperience, I'm not thrilled with the idea that I'm bringing some of these comments, or some of these comments in general are being brought to this meeting rather than to earlier meetings, if that makes sense. And that's, I look at that as part of my inexperience, joining PrAC, learning what truly the responsibilities of PrAC are and how PrAC feels about its work plan in the future and the advice that the board can use to direct that work plan or at least approve a work plan in the future so that these types of things are looked at more seriously. Because you're right, Director Fleishman, I don't think the current PrAC work plan has been looking at these as broadly as the Lake Equity Work Group would be doing. And I don't think, and I think it could benefit from some of that further guidance. So the PrAC in general has, both the lakes as a facility and their use within Reston are directly under PrAC's purview from what we have looked at. And the examples that Julie has listed here are not necessarily to say that the job is done or complete, but I think it is more to bring to light some of the work that PrAC has done in regards to equity, and that more could be done. But at least there is a history of PrAC taking on these types of sensitive topics for our community and working to find resolutions for them. And again, I think as a board, we have a opportunity to direct how PrAC goes about its business with the work plan, and we could work to do so in a more effective way if this is something that we really want to pursue.
Anyone else? Director Collins? Director Mapar? Okay. I wish I could agree that PrAC is capable of handling this material. I don't, and I'm a member of PrAC. And I've been on PrAC for years, and I was on PrAC's predecessor. And looking at the community survey product and the amount of work that PrAC's going to have to do with regard to the results of the community survey, to ask them to take on this issue in addition to the issues that they're going to be, I mean, you and I have been a couple of meetings recently, Director Gravich, where the PrAC members kind of sat around and were twiddling their thumbs because they're waiting for the community survey. But once the community survey comes back.
At our direction.
They're going to be busy, okay? I mean, you know, we have, there has been talk for years about redeveloping Golf Course Island and not just the pool, but the entire acreage around it. That will tie them up for a year at least, okay? And then doing the outreach and all this other jazz. I'm not convinced that PrAC can handle this issue.
As currently constructed, I would agree with you.
Or, I don't, I think you would have to do a radical change in the membership in order to redirect the mindset. Because those folks are thinking about facilities as opposed to equity. I haven't heard in, how many years have I been on PrAC? Three years? Two years? I haven't heard the word equity mentioned once. Not once. If anything, if anything, I've heard some statements made that made me shudder when it came to equity, and I can share those with you offline. So I'm not sure that, and not only that, Chairman Bitzer's memo, she didn't talk to PrAC about it before she sent it to us.
I mean, she did talk to me about it.
I understand, but she's got a whole committee over there, that she's volunteering to take on a task and never talked to them.
Again, it's not on, yeah, so.
It's not on, and it's not on the work plan.
No, it currently is on our work plan.
It's on whose work plan?
It's on PrAC's work plan.
To work on equity?
Yes.
It is to, and she quoted it in there, it is to look at all of our facilities and making sure that all members benefit from our facilities.
But she's saying that she would ask the board to expand PrAC's outreach and engagement task.
We could expand and add equity, but it is, it is part of their charter to look and make sure that all, but we, we could.
No, sorry.
No, no, because I, I think I talked out of turn. I feel like I interrupted someone, and I don't know who it is.
You're fine, keep going.
I feel like we could zone in on PrAC's work plan, as she suggested, but their charter is to give suggestions for how to change or improve our facilities so that all members benefit from our facilities. That is, that is PrAC's normal charge, and then they have a work plan. So we could add equity specifically to that. And I think that she also suggests that we take the members from the Lake Equity Working Group volunteers that we already have and add them to PrAC, which would change the demographics of the committee. And as other committees do, they could break up into smaller groups and to, you know, you could work on equity, and we'll work on Golf Course Island, and we'll work on the survey, and then we'll bring all three of those issues back to a meeting. So I, I do think that it could work. We have tried for many months to recruit this committee, and we still don't have, we still don't have the demographics that we want for the committee. And so I'm not sure, I feel like we're pushing something that the members are, you know, may not be as interested in as we thought that they were, they might when we first formulated it. So.
Go ahead.
I would, I would motion that we dissolve the concept of the Lake Equities Working Group and divert the resources, volunteer resources, and the topic of equity to PrAC and its work plan.
Motion by Justack, seconded by Mapar. Discussion. Before we get to that discussion, I want to share a story. When I was a young man, there were two lakes near my house. And the lakes were created because there was a dam owned by Bird and the Sons. And the existence of that dam created two lovely lakes that we fished in and we skated on and all that happy jazz. And then the Comalt of Massachusetts, in its infinite wisdom, came out with new regulations on what was required to maintain the dam. And Bird and Sons no longer needed the electricity generated by the dam nor the water generated by the dam, and they opened the sluice gates. And what had been a beautiful lake was turned into a muddy swamp and became covered in purple loo strife. And now, 30 years later, it's a meadow. Maintaining those lakes costs the membership a whole boatload of money, and I'd like to know what that number is. And I'd like to know what it costs our membership on a per household basis. And can I ask our COO to come up with that number for us?
Sure.
Because I'm of a mind that we ought to increase the boat registration number to cover that expense. Because this is, this is an amenity that is not generally available to all of the membership. Anybody who wants to go play on Quarter Main Field, they're free to go do it. But I can't put a pontoon boat on any of the four lakes. And I never will be able to put a pontoon boat on any of the four lakes. I can kayak, I can canoe, but, you know. And I own that lake as much as anybody who lives near it. And the people who live in all the multifamily own that lake as much as anybody who abuts it. And so I think there's a lack of appreciation for the degree to which the 24,000 households pay to keep that amenity in place for the people who front on the lake. When I hear conversations about the lake, I hear entitlement. It's my lake, it's our lake, and it isn't. And I'm not suggesting we open up the sluice ways, let me be very clear. But if it ever comes to the time when maintaining those dams is more than we can handle, if it ever comes the day when, you know, we have to have a special assessment against the homeowners for a couple of thousand dollars to repair one of those dams, good luck. Open up those sluice gates is a solution to that issue. So I think there is a place for this conversation. I have grave doubts as a member of PrAC that PrAC's the place for it. But I think there needs to be a deeper appreciation for the fact that, in a indirect way, out of 63,000 members, nearly 60,000 are subsidizing those lakes and getting almost no use out of them. And I think that's what was the motivation for that motion last January. I'm sorry?
December.
December, thank you. Anyway, those are my thoughts, but on the motion, did you want to speak to the motion? I have a second, anyone else want to speak to the motion?
I view PrAC as basically an entity which deals with real estate, with all sorts of facilities. They simply do not have a membership whose experience is such that they understand what it means to be a member of the minority group in Reston or a group that is economically not well off. And economically well, not well off can be, in today's world, $50,000 a year for a family of four, or $75,000. And they don't have the experience to know what it means to have gone to sit in a public place along the lakes and have someone come up to you and say, "What are you doing here? You don't belong here." And they're Reston residents. And that goes in the face of what Reston is supposed to be like. And PrAC has done nothing about that in all the time it has been here. And to do what is being suggested, to fall the people who are, have applied to be members of this group into PrAC is to dilute whatever effectiveness they may have, make it an adjunct, and say, "Go off, do your thing, and we'll come back and pass judgment on it. And if we think it's okay, we'll let you know." That just doesn't work. That's not the purpose of this working group, and it is to allow them to have a direct say to the board. And you're filtering it through PrAC. I am directly opposed to that. And I think it's an affront to the members who have applied to suggest that.
Director Dog.
I would disagree. I would say that putting this, that accepting the invitation of the current head of PrAC to take equity as a serious issue as it relates to the lakes and other amenities of Reston Association is asking PrAC to live up to their job. Equity is a part of what Reston Association is about throughout all of our committees. And so putting this within PrAC, I think is the right place. And I do think it requires an expansion of who is on PrAC. And I do think that these people who have said, "I want to address the equity issue regarding lakes", need to be empowered by becoming part of a subcommittee of PrAC that takes the issue seriously. So, you know, I do support all the energy that Director Fleishman and before him, our past president, Director De Souza, you know, had put into this issue. I think that effort has to be honored and respected. But I also think it needs to happen through the structure of our existing committee structure, and that PrAC, you know, should be the place to get it done. So that's why I support the motion.
May I, can I let up the people talk first, Director Fleishman? Do you have the motion? The motion that Justice Act made, do you have it?
I don't have to see the reply.
Okay. Can you restate your motion again, Director Joseph?
Motion to dissolve the Lake Equities Working Group and divert the volunteer resources and equity topic to PrAC.
What would you do with the people who've applied to be on the Lake Equity Group?
Those are the, those are the volunteer resources that I'm referring to in the motion.
What would you say that we would be, that the board would appoint them to PrAC? Would we have to amend the PrAC resolution to expand the membership?
I don't have, how many are there and how many are on PrAC? I don't, I don't know.
My understanding is, PrAC's, PrAC only has one vacancy. My understanding is PrAC's, PrAC only has one vacancy. So we would have to expand the membership of PrAC. I'm asking.
Well, yes, that's essentially what I, I think that the motion says because I'm
Well, I'd like it to be more explicit.
More specific in your motion.
Okay. So, motion to dissolve the Lake Equity Working Group and expand the count of PrAC?
The membership?
The membership of PrAC, the membership slots on PrAC. By appointing the volunteer resources we already have for the Lake Equity Working Group and assign the equity topic to PrAC.
And, and, I just wanted, I just wanted the motion stated clearly.
Yeah.
Okay? Because I think that was your intention. I just wanted it to be explicit so people don't have to read through the line.
Yes, I'm trying to expand PrAC. Take the Lake Equity Working Group resources of volunteers, put them on PrAC, add them to the PrAC committee, and ask PrAC to make equity an important topic for them this year.
I know, I got you. I just wanted it clearly stated.
Well done.
Okay. Any other, anybody who hasn't spoken to the issue wish to be heard? Director Collins? Director Patraine? Director Grywich?
I'm still at sixes and sevens as to... I can appreciate equity, even though I'm so white I glow.
I got your point.
It is, I think it is, in large part, a communications issue. As, as opposed to, as to what is available to people and what it costs. And one of the factors that we are looking at in the biennial budget is the elimination of member costs for passes. I'm just, I'm just trying to, I've participated in a number of committees and task force to deal with this issue in the federal government. And it took a very long time just to really understand what the expectation was. There was a lot of anger and a lot of sorrow. But, and I know, I know, I have a, a good friend that's constantly being kicked off the lakes because he's not the right, he's not the right shade when he fishes. But he, he is, he's just an example. I, I, it's, it's, it's an issue I, I have struggled with for a long time and I just don't know how to effectively do it. It's not that, it's not worth the effort. But I just am at sixes and seven is how to, how to even get started effectively.
Director Grywich?
I realize, one, to, like, I realize that this comment may be naive or may look, may not fully appreciate the topics that Director Patraine, Director Fleishman are bringing up, President Farrell that you brought up. But as a overarching idea, concept, regardless of where equity is talked about or acted on, it is on all of us, starting at the board level, but working its way down to every member of the 66,000 people that make up Reston, to root out some of the bad apples conversations that we are hearing about today. We cannot tolerate that as a community. And I, I firmly believe that it can start with all of us, regardless of where this ends up. It can start with all of us to make sure that we do not have incidents that we are hearing about in this session, where people are being wrongfully kicked off of lakes, they're being wrongfully, as members, as paying members, to your point, not being able to utilize the facilities that belong to them just as much as it does to everybody else who pays the assessment. So, again, call it naive, call it wishful thinking. I truly believe that regardless of where this ends up, whether it's PrAC, whether it's an equity work group, that message has just got to be said more. It's got to be acted on in real life. And it is on all of us, whether we are on a boat where we overhear a conversation or we're in a park and we overhear a conversation or we see an action happen in front of us to correct it and fix it. Because it just, we cannot tolerate that. So, anyway.
When you're, Mr. Sack, when you're putting together what it costs us to maintain the lakes, make sure you throw in what it costs to dredge, which you have to dredge them every five to 10 years. And that's an expense borne by the entire membership. We don't just ask the lakefront people to pay for that. We can't, except through the boat fees, because we have to have a uniform assessment. So, I'm open to that idea. Director Fleishman, Director Sack?
Frankly, I view this motion as an attempt to usurp something that was passed in December and to which no objection was raised when it was passed. And nothing was said about PrAC having the authority to do it or being involved in, in all this time until tonight. And I feel sandbagged because I didn't receive this memo from Julie until just before, just at this meeting. And I read through it very quickly. And I am very upset that this is the way this is being handled. And I point out to you that if you intend to pass this, you better pass it with more than, with six votes or more. Because otherwise it's not going to pass. It will not meet the requirements.
Help me with that?
You have a resolution that authorized the creation of this working group. Now you're going to say goodbye, working group. You need six votes.
Where's my, where's counsel? Mr. Champ?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. How are you feeling?
Oh, better and better by the second.
The assertion has been made that in order to repeal or get rid of the equity group, I need six affirmative votes. Can you help me with that? I'm not familiar with that concept.
When you're attempting to modify a previous decision, if there is notice of the attempt to modify, then it's a simple majority. Without notice, you require the supermajority.
Thank you, Director Fleishman. So we need two thirds in order to do that because there was no notice?
That's right.
Okay.
But we made, didn't we give notice in the packet because we had several motions to?
There was no other motion, only the motions I presented.
A motion to dissolve.
No, not a, not a motion to dissolve.
Order, order, order.
That's, that's what, that's all I'm asking is, we, we, we had an intent to make changes.
Right.
And so that is not?
But dissolution is more than making changes.
Okay.
So I think the point of order is well taken, Director Fleishman.
I, I would like to continue with what I was going to say.
Did you have other remarks?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you. I doubt very much that the people you attend, intend to incorporate into PrAC by this motion will care to join. They will recognize it for what it is, they will recognize it as an attempt to dilute their efforts, and they will respond accordingly. I could be wrong, but that's my understanding. I have spoken with all of them to assure that those who were still interested would continue and would either, either, if they had been interviewed, continued their interest to be members of the committee, of the working group. Or if they were, had not been interviewed, that they would interview and that they were continued, continuing in their interest to participate. They expressed to me their interest in doing it because it gave them an opportunity to deal with the inequities that they saw. And by folding them into PrAC and not having this as the direct effort, unfiltered and uncensored by PrAC, I think you'll lose the interest. You'll lose mine, frankly.
Anyone else to speak to the motion pending?
Erwin, would your thoughts change if you were the PrAC liaison?
Truly, it's not.
No, I would not want to be PrAC liaison. I was at a time and I do not wish to return to it.
Okay. I mean, other thoughts?
Director Patraine, then Director Dodd, and then I need to brief Director Johnson on the motion that's pending. Go ahead.
Quickly. If we, if we choose to stay with the existing proposal, is it, how long, how are you going to enlist the additional members? Are you just, as I think I proposed originally, just going with the people that have agreed to sit on the committee and just go?
I set out in the, in my memorandum what I proposed to do. Those, there are specific positions in the original resolution and we would maintain those. For those positions that remain unpilled, because there's no one, for instance, from North Point, either from Lakeport residents or from non-Lake side residents who qualify otherwise, we would continue to look for them and make an extra effort. And I propose that we put out sandwich boards, that we do an extra mailing, that board members contact people they know in North Point who might be interested, and that we search out more effectively for people who might have an interest. And the best way is personal contacts. There's a new communications director and I would expect that we would be talking with the new communications director to see what other efforts she might suggest in this I would suggest that, as I did earlier this evening, that the, the working group go forward. Even if they are, are not available now, they can join at any time and be integrated into the working group. I wouldn't delay the beginning of the working group because of the absence of people from North Point.
Okay, it's nine o'clock. I want to brief Director Johnson on the pending motion. And if he wants to speak to it, do you have an opportunity to speak to it? And then I would come back to Director Dodd, if that's okay?
Yes.
So, the subject is the Lake Equity Working Group. A motion has been made, I want to make sure I state it right, so feel free to jump in, is to dissolve the Lake Working Group and to expand the PrAC committee to, to include on PrAC all of the people who have applied to be on the Lake Equity Group. Fair statement? What say you?
And then ask, and then ask PrAC to take up the issue of, that, that we have for the Lake Equity Working Group.
Expanding their work plan?
Explain, yeah, expanding their work plan.
Everybody else has had a lot to say about this. So, and, and I apologize that, that you're coming in here and, but I don't want you to, I don't want the board to vote without you having an opportunity to express your thoughts.
I appreciate it. Please.
I was wondering if John would allow me to make my comments before?
No, please.
Bringing you into the conversation.
Go ahead.
Because it's hard to stop, join in midstream.
Please.
And so, my comments are, I hear Erwin has a concern that incorporating the Equity Working Group volunteers into PrAC, as this motion proposes, would dilute the voice of those people. And that is certainly not something that I would want to do in any way. And so I guess partly I have, and yet, you know, the Lake Equity Working Group, my concern has always been that its charter has been unclear. And I think putting it in as an element of PrAC is clarifying because equity of access to our recreational facilities is always a part of PrAC, it is a part of Reston Association or it should be. And if they had not taken up that role in the past, this is a call for them to do that and to compel them to do that. So I don't understand whether being a subcommittee of PrAC would have the effect of diluting the voice of these people. And, and I, so partly I've got a question and partly I've got a statement that I, there is no reason for the voice of these members to be diluted, whether it's part of PrAC or part of a secret, separate working group.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, since I'm just coming in cold, I need to collect, collect my thoughts for a moment. Is, should, should this group be folded under PrAC? Would it be a separate entity under PrAC or is it just, these folks are just PrAC members? And, okay.
It would be up to PrAC to organize these folks into a subcommittee, I would think.
Given, given that, I don't know that I could support that. I, I, I agree with Lori, and I've expressed this a number of times, that sometimes this feels like a, a working group without charter. Like, it may have, it felt like it was formed a little backwards. But at the end of the day, the, the need to improve overall Restonian access to all of our, to our lakes is an important task. And I, I would not, would not support folding it under PrAC.
Okay, I think everybody's had their say, there are two says on this motion. And if anybody else thinks that they, a thought that they have has not been expressed, I'll be lenient. But I'd like to try and put a bow on this one if we can, Director Fleishman?
I would like to.
And I'd like a vote.
I would like to rebut what Lori said about the lack of clarity of what this Equity Working Group would do. It is set out clearly and I highlighted it in my memo as to how clear it was. And so I object to her characterization as unclear.
Well, civilly stated. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. I count Director Maupar, Director Judge Sack, Director Grywich, Director Dodd. Director Collins, do you vote in favor of the motion?
I vote no.
Director Collins votes no. Direct, uh, who vote, Director Johnson votes no?
That's correct.
That is correct, yes.
Director Fleishman, you vote no.
No.
Director Patraine votes no. So that's four to three. One, two, three, four.
Four to four.
Four, four.
Four to four.
Four, four. So, the motion fails. Director Fleishman, do you have another motion for us to consider tonight? Or do you want to write something up in the way of a red line to present at a future board meeting?
I have.
President, President Farrell, can I interrupt you for just a second?
Go ahead.
I, I thought you were going to vote in cases where there was a tie.
Well, in this case, I don't need to vote because it, we needed six affirmative votes to pass.
Okay, wouldn't matter, you're right, got it, thanks.
Thank you, Director Collins, for inquiring. I, I, I appreciate the opportunity to explain. Director Fleishman?
I have presented several motions already, which I believe sufficiently.
You want to proceed with those?
There's one other motion that I suggested be made this evening, which I would be happy to make, but I had the motion set up, move that Director Fleishman be appointed as chair of the Lake Equity Working Group.
Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
Second by Director Johnson. Motion by Director Fleishman, seconded by Director Johnson. Discussion.
Apologies, because I don't remember the list of motions that you have here. Is there one that will address specific sections or is there one where we can make comments on specific sections of your rewrite?
This is?
Because I, I do not oppose this current one, but if this is the only vote we're taking tonight, I'd like to just state a few interesting.
We're going to vote on each motion individually.
There are several more. Okay. Trying to remember, because the, the motions are in the body of the memo?
Not in the agenda. Not in the agenda.
Okay, so we're not out. Okay, so we're now as motions? Gotcha, okay. No further comment?
Sir, and there was a second to that motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Director Judgeack. It helps if you raise this hand, because I can't see.
Oh, sorry. I'm left-handed, you know? That's why I use my left hand.
But I don't see it, so I.
Erwin, I appreciate you stepping up to be Chair of the committee, but I think that the purpose of the committee is really about giving the voice to the people on the committee. And traditionally, within our own governing documents, with the exception of our BAC and BGC, which are board-only committees, we're liaisons to committees, not chairs of committees, and we let our groups kind of formulate and pick their chair and recommend their chair. So, I'd like to give this, if we're going to go forward with this group, that same opportunity.
So, can I make a suggestion? Director Flashman?
I'd like to speak to that. There is like.
Director Flashman, may I make a suggestion as presented?
Sure.
Would you be open to the idea of having yourself appointed as the temporary chair of the group until it is fully formed and that you give, then ask the group to select a chair? I think that enables you to be the organizing force and at the same time follow our precedent in other cases.
There is precedent for this.
Precedent in other cases. I'm not saying we never did it, Director Flashman. I'm asking you, in the interest of moving us along at nine, 10 at night.
I think this is worth the discussion. If she wants to raise it, then I want to answer it.
That's fine. So, the suggestion I'm making is not acceptable.
I would like to address her, the issue she's raising. And if you permit me to do that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. In the special committee that was formed to review all of the facilities, it was headed by, it was chaired by a member of the Board of Directors. So, there is clear precedent for that. And in the meantime, PrAC was sort of go for a rest. And that's what PrAC did. Was only reconvened after they rendered their report. It has always been my intention, and it is clearly stated here and in the resolution, that if the members of the committee will be the drivers for what happens. In the sense of, they will determine what they want to investigate, the kinds of things that they want to set out as potential policies, and the recommendations to implement those policies for the board's consideration. You specifically said that there has to be a driver from the board for this committee. A liaison is not a driver.
Is it?
That's it.
Director Dodd?
Help me out with Robert's rules. If it's appropriate, I would like to amend the motion so that, to incorporate the suggestion that you have made, that Director Flashman would be the chair for the purposes of organizing the committee, the Lake Equity Working Group. But then, once the group has gathered, that that group be empowered to select their own chair to move forward at that point.
Is there a second to that motion? Director Johnson seconds the motion. Discussion. Director Dodd?
I think it's important for the committee to happen, and Erwin has been the one who has been driving it. And without Erwin, we would not be at the point we're at today. And so, I want to have him continue to be the person who pushes this group into existence. But then, when the Lakes Equity Working Group is all formed, and we've got a diverse group of people who have reasons that they are concerned about the equity of access to our recreational resources or any resources, I would like that group to be able to select their own chair.
Director Flashman?
When is that supposed to happen? Because your motion is not clear as to when is that supposed to happen? After the first meeting? After the second meeting?
Doesn't need to be.
Third meeting?
Doesn't need to be.
I see. So, tell me when it's going to happen?
Well, that'd be, in some degree, up to you. But I think the board would expect you to come back to us with a recommendation for a new chair in short order.
Oh, that's what I'm asking. How many meetings does it take?
You know what? I'll leave that to your infinite discretion.
And I would agree that I would make the motion, but lead the implementation of it, the timing of it, to be something that I would trust the working group to handle on their own, or with your guidance in getting them assembled.
Initiative, I think, is what we're looking for. Any other conversation on the amendment? We ready for a vote? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Four, that is Director Collins. Four in favor, opposed. Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Next motion. Oh, wait a minute. We now have the most.
Still on the main motion.
Main motion. Thank you, Director Collins. I was just about to say that. Any further discussion on the main motion? All those in favor of the main motion, say aye. The main motion is to appoint, is to appoint Director Flashman as the temporary chair of the committee. Any further conversation on the main motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
We got one, two, three. All those opposed? One, two. Director Grewidge?
I'm not following, so I'd rather abstain, because I don't know what I'm voting for at the moment.
Okay, so the motion is three, three, I think? Is that right? Random that right? Who voted opposed? Three opposed. Who voted aye? Director Johnson, Director Dodd?
Does the main, sorry.
The main motion is to appoint Director Flashman as the temporary chair.
As the temporary chair, yes. Okay. Understood, thank you.
Are you voting aye? Voting aye. Okay, I think the motion.
And I did not vote.
And you, you're abstaining?
No.
You're abstaining? Are you abstaining, or are you voting aye?
I'm voting aye.
You're voting aye. Okay, the motion passes. Okay, next motion. Brittany, did you get that count?
Yes.
Brand. Next motion.
Motion. Move that if applications to be a member of the Lake Equity Working Group have fallen short of the applicants needed to fill the slots established by the Lakes Equity Working Group Charter, that RA staff undertake further efforts to attract additional applications by placing sandwich boards in the districts where there is need for additional applicants and send out an additional email and postcards to the residents in targeted areas, extending the time to apply until shortly before the October BAC meeting, to allow for their interview and ultimate selection in October.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I have a second for the purpose of discussion.
Second by Director Johnson. Discussion, Director Flashman?
I undertook a discussion in my memorandum. I don't think it's necessary for me to elaborate on it.
Director Johnson?
I am largely fine with that. I have concern about the cost of the postcards. I don't know that we want to, that this is something else we want to spend, do a spend on. I'm fine doing sandwich boards, I'm fine doing emails. I'm not as fine doing postcards.
Director Dodd, then Director Mappar.
We have a new communications director. Am I using the right word for the position? And so, I feel that we should direct the staff to increase outreach to fill the position, but that we should not direct exactly how that should be done. Whether or not sandwich boards or postcards or emails or mailings is something that I believe our staff in the communication department should decide.
Is that a motion to amend?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Have a second.
Motion made and seconded to direct staff to increase the communication to fill out the seats that are currently vacant. Discussion. Director Judgeack?
I'm sorry, I'd like to, I know that staff have increased their reach already, and so I'm not sure what additional reach we can do. I think that Erwin specifically suggested some, and they're good ideas. I'm opposed to them because I've signed off on the invoices to send out postcards, and it's very expensive. And sandwich boards, I know you wrote and checked RA to do sandwich boards, because those are also very expensive, or more expensive than I ever thought that they would be. And so, I think that the staff have done the outreach that they can do, and they've done it multiple times already.
All right.
Director Flashman?
I'd like to hear from our CEO what has been done.
Well, and our new director starts September 25.
That's, yes, that's the easy question answer. Our new director starts on 25. I may ask Brittany, Brittany handled a lot of this for us. We certainly did not send out postcards, but we have been trying to reach more people for Lake Equity.
Through our social. Through our social media, through the Friday RA News, all of this information goes out. We reach out to see if anyone has any interest. So, through most of our social media platforms is where we're sending out this information.
Was there any attempt to use personal contacts? Was there any attempt to use sandwich boards? Was there any attempt to reach out to cluster directors? Was there any attempt to specifically reach out to those who live on the lakeside clusters and to apartments and condominiums in North Point? Or non-Lakeside dwellers?
This is Cam Adams, if I could be recognized.
Yes.
I just want to share that this was actually in Cluster Connect newsletter twice. We have individually reached out to every cluster in each district to specifically communicate an opening on the Lake Equity Working Group as a way through our show and tells. You've also been mentioning those as well. There has not been much feedback or response related to interest.
Motion pending is an amendment to direct staff to enhance the communication to fill out the vacancies on the board. That's an amendment. Further conversation on the amendment? Hearing and seeing none, ask for a vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Director Dodd, Director Grewidge voting in favor. Those opposed? Director Judgeack, Director Patraine, Director Johnson, Director Mappar, Director Collins, how say you?
Abstain.
Abstain, so motion is defeated. On the amendment, we're back to the main motion. Further conversation on the main motion? Yes. Director Mappar?
Thank you. We've had so many motions, I'm kind of confused right now. Can we just repeat the main motion, please?
The main motion is to, is on the screen.
Is written on, number two on the screen.
So, I'm concerned, very concerned. It feels like we're pushing this issue without any end in sight.
I'm sorry, sir.
Without any end in sight. And my comment relates to, so if you, if we want, if we want to get people involved, how many times do we want to do this? At what point do we say we're not getting enough response, communication is being sent out there and so on? What happens then? Do we just keep pushing this until infinity? What is the timeline for this? How far do we go? Is this going to go until, until maybe two years from now we get some people involved? So, that's my concern.
Thank you. Any other comments on the main motion? Ma'am?
I've heard a reference to the cost of postcards and sandwich boards. Does anyone have information to provide us with an actual number of the cost we're looking for if we approve this motion? The cost, because this specifically says sandwich boards and postcards to residents in target areas.
So, I think from a, the answer tonight is no. I would not have that for you tonight. We certainly have a sense of what it costs to mail out election ballots, so if there's an idea to be sending a postcard to every address in a district or, you know, depending on, and further on in the memo, it explains who's missing from the, you know, the, so, but if we were to target like an entire area, then that's a, that would be a significant number. But I don't know what it would be tonight.
When we say significant, we're talking five figures, not ten.
I don't know, from an election standpoint, do you know what, any idea?
So, Erwin?
Yeah, that's about what I expected. Here, you're targeting only North Point and not even all of North Point, because single-family homes are not included.
Okay, but it's more than five cents.
Yes.
Okay. Terrific. Any further conversation on the main motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, raise their hand, please. See Director Flashman raising his hand. I see no one else. All those opposed? Director Collins? What say you? I have Director DeNoz, Director Judgeack.
Sorry, I couldn't get off of you. I'm an aye.
You're an aye, okay. Opposed are Director Judgeack, Director Mappar, Director Johnson, Director Grewidge, Director Grewidge, sorry, Director Dodd, and Director Patraine. Motion fails. Next motion, please.
The present resolution, I propose move to amend removing from membership on the committee the Director of Human Relations.
What motion is that? Is that motion?
That is not written, that is one I discussed.
That was made orally.
I'm sorry?
Never mind, nothing.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm sorry?
What is the motion?
Say that again. Repeat the motion.
Repeat the motion, please.
Motion is to remove the Director of Human Resources, is that the right title?
Yeah.
Human Resources from membership on the committee. Is there a second?
There's.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay. Second by Director Dodd. Discussion.
There has been significant concern expressed by the CEO, as, in particular with respect to the Director of Human Resources, and the timing and the involvement that that might mean for that director on the working group. And upon further consideration, I thought that it was appropriate to allow the director to be released from that responsibility. And also, as presuming that we would have access to her for consultation in the event that it was appropriate to make that consultation.
And that latter part is not part of your motion, though. Director Judgeack, then Director Dodd.
Erwin, I understand, I thought I understood from your write-up that you wanted to add the Director of Covenants Administration.
No, that's the, the CEO has added him.
The CEO appointed.
So, our, but the, but the Lake, the working group says that we have two non-voting staff liaisons, which is the watershed manager and the director of HR.
That's correct.
So, we have not added the Director of Covenants Administration.
The CEO has named the Director of Covenants as his appointee, and that is provided for in the resolution.
Oh, one, one voting staff representative?
That's correct.
Okay. So, that, so the voting staff representative is Cam, and then we are now deciding whether it's just going to be, but it says two non-voting staff liaisons.
Yes.
So, if we take Sam off, the Director of HR, then we still have a spot to fill.
No.
So, are we?
No.
So, then the motion needs to include to remove one non-voting staff liaison, not just to remove Sam.
That's the intent of motion.
That's the intent of the motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion? Thank you for clarifying that. Director Judgeack, then Director Flashman, Director Dodd?
Yeah, so that was really my question is, refresh my recollection, I don't know exactly what staff engagement is expected with this Equity Working Group. And I fully support removing the Director of HR, but my question is, what other staff But my question is, what other staff commitments are made towards this?
Inquiry is not germane to the question, Director Dodd, if you don't mind. I'd like to try and keep us on the main motion. And the main motion is to remove, to reduce the number of staff liaison by one and to remove the human resources person as one of the staff liaisons. And anybody who wants to speak to that, that's great. But I'd like to try and keep us on track at being 9:30.
Understood.
So no offense intended.
Of course.
Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor will say, raise their hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I see. Looks like, Director Collins, you vote aye?
I need someone to restate the motion. I'm sorry, I got lost.
That's all right. The motion is to reduce the number of staff liaison by one and to eliminate the Director of Human Resources as one of the staff liaisons. Oh, by the way, everybody else is voting in favor. Subtle hint.
All right, Chair, what the hell, yes.
Moving on.
Take motion.
Can I just offer something? Because I appreciate your comments about the motion. As I understand, once this group is comprised, one of the first meetings will be to set up the actual work plan. So there still are some concerns about the overall staff involvement that are yet undisclosed or unknown. So I think I would hope with board indulgence, if I need to swap out appointees or other things, that that is going to be okay. Because I don't know at this point. And we ebb and flow from workload. So when we talk about individuals, this might be the busiest time of the year for one person, and five months from now. And so as this group is ebbing and flowing, and if it's starting or not, like, I'd have a different opinion for you four months from now at who could participate meeting.
As I read the resolution, that's your discretion.
Okay.
Next motion, Director Flashman.
This one is rather long. It is number four in my memorandum on page four. Reads as follows. Move to amend the original resolution creating the Lake Equity Working Group by adding the category of membership to be known as associate membership to the, to be composed of two groups. The first group shall be composed of those members who applied for the original membership by no later than September 5, 2023, but were not selected to be members because of the numerical limits imposed on the category of membership for which they were eligible under the original resolution. To be named to this group as an associate member, the member must be considered by the board to have knowledge, experience, and attitudes consistent with the purpose of the Lake Equity Working Group. Another class of associate members shall be composed of the following rest and association residents, none of whom may be Lakeshore residents, nor have rights or opportunities through their families to have a boat moored on one of the four RA lakes and who live in condominiums, apartments, or townhouses. Four of them shall be minority students nominated by the principal and social worker of South Lakes High School and be beneficiaries of programs at the school for underserved students. There shall be one each from grades eight, nine through 12. There shall be one resident from each of the Hunters Woods Fellowship House and the Lake Anne Fellowship House nominated by the Director of each such glowing. If the foregoing seats are not filled and any remaining associate seats on the Lake Equity Working Group may be filled by the board from RA members, none of whom may be Lakeshore residents nor have rights or opportunities through their families to have a boat moored on one of the four RA lakes and who live in condominiums, apartments, or townhouses and whose family incomes for four members do not exceed $75,000 a year and are members of a racial, linguistic, cultural, or ethnic minority. The total number of associate members shall not exceed 10. Associate members shall be allowed to speak at the meetings of the Lake Equity Working Group and suggest actions as other members may, but shall not have voting rights. The board may direct staff to actively seek out additional associate members from the minority class of members as it seems appropriate.
Second. Looking for a second. Hearing and seeing none, the motion fails. Next motion, Director Flashman.
I have no further questions.
Director Justack.
This board requested Irwin to, or whoever was going to pick it up, and Irwin picked it up, to go back and look at the actual work that the committee was going to do. Because we have talked multiple times that we did not think that it was clear what was being delivered. We have not passed a motion tonight to clear up what it is the Lake Equity Working Group is going to work on and what they are going to be expected to deliver to the association. And so I still don't think that we can move forward because we haven't met the goal that we originally set out, which was to clarify what is the group going to do.
I'd like to respond to that. I answered that in my memorandum. And the original background set out for the resolution in December 15, 2022, I think sets out clearly what are the purposes and what are the goals of this working group. And I went to the trouble of highlighting them. Please point out to me how that is not sufficiently clear.
The last part's up.
I beg to speak up.
Trying to maintain civility here.
That's not uncivil. You're saying that it's unclear. I'd like to know how.
Director Flashman is out of board. Director Johnson, do you have something?
I do. I think it was fairly clear that Director Justack was saying that we needed a motion to explicitly state what the purpose was. So if you, Director Flashman said it, you've got, you've got the explicit purpose of the organization highlighted in your memorandum.
Director Johnson, if I can help you?
Please.
He's highlighting the language in the original resolution.
I understand that. I understand.
So his answer to Director Justack is, I understand it, and you can correct me if I misunderstand, is that the purposes are already set out in the original resolution.
Understood.
And he's highlighted the language in the original resolution that answers the question of purposes.
But I think that answers the board's request from the previous one.
That's his answer. And, you know, if somebody else has a different answer, they can make a different motion. But I don't have a motion pending. And unless I have a motion pending, our business is concluded for the evening. And I'm going to declare that we are adjourned, but Director Justack has a different idea.
Thanks, Jen.
So can you explain, because we have a motion that requested that we get, that whoever one of us wanted to take this up was going to bring back clarity. Without clarity, what, what happens? What's the next, what would be the next step?
As I as I understand the report back from the directed charge with reporting back, his view is that the language in the original resolution satisfies the inquiry. That's his view. That's the charge we gave him. And his answer is, the clarity that we wanted is in the resolution. I would suggest to Director Justack or anybody else who's unsatisfied with the language pointed out by Director Flashman, that at the next meeting, a motion could be brought forward to modify the resolution to add clarity if Director Flashman's answer to the question is unsatisfactory. But I ain't doing that tonight.
No, I'm not looking to make editing language tonight, but I, I don't think that we've settled the board's request. I, I was, Owen, I was very familiar with this language. I read it. I appreciate you highlighting it for the board. But I think, given what we had before, highlighting it is not giving us clarity on what this group is going to deliver to the board. And I think that we will set them out to fail by not giving them clarity on what it is we are looking for. And even throughout the document of the things that you've highlighted, it kind of bebops back and forth between equity framework, policies, the working group, opportunities and address inequities at play. It, like, what are, what are they going to bring us? And I do, it's important as a group that we put, we need to create some, some type of loosely grayed box on where we, we are expecting them to go.
Director Flashman, I'm going to beg your indulgence. I'm going to beg your indulgence.
I'd like to, I'd like to create a motion that says we, we would like to, we would, we are still looking for that a motion that the board is still looking for the clarity and would direct any volunteer of the board to bring us back clarity on what.
And that volunteer would include the Vice President?
Yes. So this is ripe for a future motion.
If any member of this board believes that that language is inadequate, any member of this board can bring that matter up to this board. And I'm happy to postpone further consideration of this matter to a future board meeting to enable that to come forward without having to go through BACH or BGC or anybody else. If somebody doesn't think that language is sufficient, offer the board other language. And I'm
But without the clarity that the board asked for, we're moving forward. That, that, then I need to know what the path is.
Hang on.
So as a board member, I do not offer clarity.
You, okay.
Then what happens?
Let me try it again. We charged Director Flashman to bring us back something that clarified what the mission was. He came back to us and said, I think the mission is clearly set out in the resolution. You disagree, okay? Which is your prerogative. But given that, I can't make him do something he doesn't think needs to be done. Okay? So if somebody else has language that they want to propose that adds clarity of a more specific kind than what Director Flashman offers, bring it to the next board meeting. I will
I'm hearing you.
I'm, I'm
But what happens if we don't?
If we don't, then they, if they don't, they either
We have what we have.
We, right. And, and if they flail around, they flail around and we'll take him outside and beat him with the wet wheel.
No, 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 no. But that was not the intent of what the board, that was not the intent of what the board was requesting.
Okay. No, no.
Then end the meeting, that's fine.
No, we have concluded our business for the evening, Mr. Flashman.
Nope.
And, and anything else is an unnecessary extension.
This is a very short statement. One sentence.
Thirty seconds.
The board has clearly stated that the ideas should come from the group. And I am not going to limit what the group can come up with. Period.
Thank you for that clarification, Director Flashman. If somebody else has another idea other than what Director Flashman has offered, I'm going to ask that this, with the unanimous consent of the board, that this matter be carried over to the next board meeting. And if somebody has a proposal to add more clarity to what is there, we can consider it at the September 28 board meeting. Got it, Brittany? Good. Director Maypar, please let us go home.
We went through this round and round and motion after motion. We spent about one hour and 45 minutes on this. What did we accomplish?
Right.
I think we accomplished the clarification and the revision of a prior resolution. And we did it pretty efficiently. I'm sorry if the conduct of the meeting didn't meet with your approval.
I'm still as confused as when we started this at nine o'clock. Because I still don't know where this committee's going. And I don't know what the end result is. And I don't know when they will come back with anything.
Your editorial comment is noted. Thank you for that. There being no further business before the board, we stand adjourned at 9:44. Thank you all.